Okay, I think we'll start now with our workshop, then go into our regular meeting starting at 7:30. And for workshop, John Clark has offered to share with us some developments, thoughts, thinking the city's doing around the Main Street corridor and I think specifically around public transport?
Yes.
And then, so we'll spend some time on that. I thought also it'd be a good idea to spend maybe 10 minutes at the end of the workshop just to talk about future workshops and ideas for content that we might want to bring to the future meetings. So any thinking on that would be really helpful. So with that, John, please.
All right. So this comes out of work that I've been working on with the Main Street Advisory Committee They've been working for two years now. It was only supposed to be a one-year thing and then, you know, the pandemic hit and things slowed it down. So in the meantime, they've put out probably about seven or eight memos to the City Council on various subjects with recommendations. And some have been accomplished, not many. The council's been busy. We've made several presentations to the council, a couple, I think, and a couple here in which I've shared different ideas that they've been working on. So what they decided on in January was to put together a compilation report of everything they've been working on and conclusions and recommendations at this point. They're not giving up yet, but they feel like they're getting close and they want to put out something in a, in a package that would sort of summarize all their efforts. And they're going to present to the City Council at their workshop on April 25th. So if you want to see the whole report, it'll be posted online before that meeting, I'm sure. And Stowe, Boyd, and I will be giving a summary presentation on the recommendations. So I've actually worked on several segments with the planning board before. We talked about traffic calming and lighting and some of the other issues. Tonight, I thought we'd talk about public transit. And, you know, Beacon has got the Free Loop system now and county bus that comes down from Poughkeepsie. The Free Loop is great. It's free. In the last full year before the pandemic, they had 38,000-plus riders, which is pretty impressive. They haven't had as much since, obviously, but they're anticipating getting back to normal, I'm hoping. That's a great positive price incentive, but there's things about the Free Loop that aren't perfect. Number one, they're using a standard bus, oversized for Main Street. Main Street is narrow. You need to sort of manipulate into stops and that sort of thing, and this bus is not suited well for Main Street. Carries a lot of people, but not very efficiently in terms of access and maneuverability. It also runs on a figure-eight loop pattern, so that if you get on at Main Street and want to go to the train station, you first have to go all the way up to the mountain and then back down past Tyranda and over to Walcott. And so it's not a very efficient way of getting from Main Street to the station or the waterfront. So part of this was to say, okay, for Main Street, what works for public transit? We really want to encourage public transit. And the idea that the committee came up with is we need to sort of reimagine the whole system. Really think about transit anew. If you really want to get people out of cars and make this a more transit-friendly and pedestrian-friendly city, you have to make a transit city system that actually works rather than something that's a default for people who just don't have cars. You want to make the transit so comfortable and accessible that people are willing to give up their cars because they don't need them. And that's the goal. And so when we looked at transit systems, what's successful and not, we came up with four primary conditions that you have to meet. One, you have to integrate it with land uses. The comprehensive plans in the last two cycles, focused development on the linkage district and the central Main Street district, both of which are transit, has transit accessibility. So the idea is to put more residents, more employment within that corridor where the bus runs, so that people live close enough that they can walk to the stop or where their destinations are close to the stop. The second thing is to have direct routes to destinations. No more figure-eights and diversions and transfers or any of those sorts of things. If you want to ride the bus regularly, it's got to go from where you want, where you are to where you want to be. And it can involve a lot of side trips because otherwise it's just more easy to get into a car. Buses already have sort of a disadvantage to private automobiles. They have certain advantages, parking, no need to park. But unless you can make that direct convenient and time-efficient, people aren't going to use it, or at least not to the, to the point where they want to give up their cars or leave their cars at home. Frequencies of no more than 10 to 15 minutes, and it really should be more, 10 minutes, but I stretched it a little bit to 15, so that you don't have to have a schedule. You just go to the bus stop and it's going to come along pretty soon. And there's also, it's very convenient to have time-to-travel notification at the transit stop or on an app, so that you know exactly where the bus is and how long it's going to be to get there, so you know, you know, when to be ready. And that you know that it's, it's coming and you don't have to wait. And the last thing is you have to make it comfortable and convenient throughout. The whole system has got to be designed for the customer, and most buses are not. They've got to be, have spacious shelters, so you don't feel like you're jammed in or exposed to the elements. You have to have level boarding, no steps, so you get on and off easily, so that transfer at the stop is efficient. Clean buses, soft seats, quiet electric motors, not diesel buses with diesel fumes. I used to ride the bus a lot when I was daily commuting to my work, and nothing is worse. To get off the bus and it takes off and leaves you in a cloud of diesel fumes, which is all too typical. And most importantly, I think, if you really want to make it work for more than daily commuters, but for visitors too, is to make it stop at exciting public places as opposed to parking lots. So right now, we have the Free Loop bus and we have a county bus that comes down seasonally, and I don't know if this is going to continue this, but in past seasons, there's been the Cold Spring Beacon Trolley Bus. But again, that's sort of an old-fashioned model of what a bus should look like. It's got high steps, it's got narrow, narrow aisles, it's got wooden seats. You know, it might look kind of cool, but does it function as a really efficient bus? And what we came up with is if you're going to have a bus system for the 21st century that's, that's, reimagines the system, it should look more like the one on the corner down here, which is from Singapore. Self-driving, low ADA entrance, designed for efficient and, and comfortable ride. And it's better to have two small buses than one big one, because you can increase the frequency and you don't have buses driving around half-empty. You want the buses to be full and active and purposeful. So in the 2017 plan, this was a map from the 2017 plan, they proposed, and this is actually an idea that rolled over from the 2007 plan, something pretty unique, not only to concentrate development along that corridor, so new housing and new employment is within walking distance of Main Street and the linkage district down to the station, but also to organize the stops around civic places. So the idea was to put a stop at a public square, a garden, a park, a pocket park, some sort of public place, every three to four blocks along that route, and to have a frequent up-and-down Main Street route, more direct, more frequent, 10 to 15-minute layovers. And so they laid out a stop at the train station, at City Hall, at the county building, at the library, the post office, at Maden Brick Homestead, and down at Fountain Square. So that's a big undertaking to create seven pocket parks along Main Street, but it is making the transit system a integrated system with land use and public spaces. In addition, every one of those places has opportunity for infill buildings that will help frame the public space, make it more active, and hopefully help to construct and maintain that park, because it's going to be in the front yard of these new buildings that wrap around the park. So they create activities on the edge to make that public space really active and exciting, and they also help maintain that park as part of their, their operations. Most of those new infill buildings are on public land, because almost all of these are on public land. And so the city will be able to determine what sort of buildings go up, what's the affordability mix, what's the uses that are allowed or targeted, and cut the deal so that they can help in the construction and maintenance of that park. And the park will have a transit stop with a shelter, hopefully a custom-designed, attractive, unique sort of shelter on the front of every one of those parks. So the key transit recommendation out of the advisory report is to begin to implement this system by issuing requests for proposals for Veterans Place, which is the sort of centerpiece one right at the post office, and at the county center parking lot. So there'll be one on the east end, one on the, on the western end of Main Street, both with large potential development opportunities and parking opportunities. So this is, is sort of the next step, is to try to sort of lay out a concept plan of how this would actually work and what it might look like. And so for various grant proposals and, and planning documents, we've come up with concept plans for almost all of these parks, at least the ones that are available on public land. So the Station Square, Veterans Place, this is the one around City Hall, and here's the one at the county center, for instance. It would wrap around the public park. People would circulate through the park to get to the entrance to the DMV. There's thought that this might be a civic building as well, maybe a relocation of city offices, city meeting space. And there's plenty of room for parking in the rear, because you could redesign that lot in the back to create 37 more spaces than there are in the lot today, even with the, with no building on the front.
Sorry, that's proposing a building on the lot?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is Elm Street and Main Street. So right now, this is all parking, but it's really inefficiently laid out. So out of that parking lot, you can create a building, mixed-use, three-story building, a public park, and more parking traces than exist now.
Now you've got to find a place for the farmer's market, John.
Well, the parking lot is still there for the farmer's.
The rear parking lot, yeah.
Yep. And there's also ideas for this parking lot here and this parking lot here. We've sort of looked at, there's a, a plan, which isn't on this drawing, for Fountain Square, to create a green space and a fountain at Fountain Square, so that you would be able to have this system of a public transit system that runs around transit parks, essentially. So I've looked around to see if I could find anybody else who's doing anything similar and whether it's worked and whether you can learn lessons, and I haven't found anywhere in the country where this idea has really been played out.
Really?
There's, there's a few places where you can find a transit shelter at a park. This is one of them, the best one I could find. This is up in Northampton, Mass. I went up and actually looked at this one. It's between two civic buildings. It's on Main Street, has a bus shelter. This was a public park before, but they redesigned it to make it a public transit stop. And so they put the transit stop over here in the corner that points towards the plaza rather than towards the street. They have bike racks, a plaza out front for outdoor sort of eating and sitting, and then a big green space for performances in the center, and then a hill in the back where they have sort of tiered seating. It's a very nice park. This is a one-acre park. It's a lot bigger than what we're talking about. We're talking about pretty compact pocket parks. But it's the, it's the only and best example I've found of a park that seems to be designed around a transit stop. And there's no system that I've found. If you go, you can find systems of parks, like Savannah, Georgia. Portland, Oregon has a sort of systematic way of looking at parks and how to link them into a walking trail. Savannah does the same thing. But nobody has it linked up to a transit system that I've been able to find. Now, I haven't searched the world, but I did my best, and if anybody knows of a system that organizes parks around transit or transit around parks, I'd appreciate the heads up. So pocket parks are capable of doing incredible things, even in small spaces. You know, these are a few examples of Green Acre Park in downtown Manhattan. It's only 60 by 120, and it really feels like a, a rich landscaped area. Waterfall Park in Seattle, even more dramatic waterfall. That's only 60 by 80. And this is a community garden up on the west side in Manhattan, 80 by 100, which really has a very nice green space and sitting areas and very actively used, and it has community gardens on the backside of it. So here's some dimensional for parks. And so somewhere in that 80 to 115 feet, you get sort of an intimate park. When you get bigger than that, you, you lose sight of people's facial recognition. You can't hear people. So a theater is no more than 115 feet or so, even with amplified voices, can you have a outdoor theater? So somewhere in that range of 80, 60 to 80 to 115, 120 feet, is really sort of an ideal size for a intimate public space that has a lot of activity and sort of concentrates the activity so it feels alive, rather than a Central Park or something big that sort of scatters people all over the place. I think that's it. I left 10 minutes for you.
No, that's fine. I'm just curious, who, maybe I should know this, but who runs the bus systems that operate in Beacon now? Is that the city?
Duchess County.
That's the county.
Yeah, it's Duchess County. Transit System runs the bus system.
How?
Except for that seasonal bus up from Cold Spring. That's run by, I think, the Chamber of Commerce in Cold Spring or something. I don't know.
So I'm just curious, around the recommendations of this committee in their conversation with the council in relationship to the bus system, what influence does the city have over the county on just that sort of thing?
The county has been very agreeable to new ideas on buses. They're, they're very open-ended. I mean, they, they entered into the city a contract to do this free bus. That's unusual. They don't do that anywhere else in the system, as far as I know. And the city has to pay a certain annual fee for that to help support it, but they're using county employees and, as bus drivers and the rest of it. So they provide the buses and work out the routes, and they're, I've been in several meetings with them in which they've been very anxious to create the best sort of route system and the most effective transit system that can be had.
That's good. All the way up to driverless buses?
They haven't got that far yet, and they, they do have labor issues, so that, that would be a sticky one.
Yeah. Well, it's good to know the city's, you know, the county's cooperating and.
Yes.
As a part of, you know, potential change, that there's a, there's an avenue, potentially.
And there are driverless buses already on the roads in the United States and certainly around the world. They're usually on fixed routes, which this would be susceptible to a fixed route with designated stops. The technology is there, it's just, you know, it has to be perfected.
Has to be tested.
Almost all of them have drivers or.
Backup drivers?
Yeah, they have drivers available at this point, even the one in Singapore.
That's great. So then you said, this is, the committee is bringing this to the council to make some recommendations this month?
Yes.
And part of those recommendations are around those two parks and working to secure grant, or was this an RFP?
Well, they're, they're thinking both.
Yeah.
So for the private development, they would help surround the parks. They would do that through an RFP. They're also out soliciting grant money to try to do one of them. They're actively working on a grant request right now.
Oh, that's great. Because I know this, this concept has been in the comprehensive plan since.
Yeah.
The first iteration in '05, was that '06?
Yeah, and it was designed for the Downtown Revitalization Initiative grants, which are big $10 million grants. And Beacon has just never been politically favored to get those grants. Every year, we, they say, oh, you had a great application, but we decided to give it to somebody else. I think it's connected to the governor's office.
Person, personalities, relationships.
In terms of who makes the final decision.
Yeah.
Beacon has always looked at as, you guys are doing great, why do we need to give money to you? That's the, been the attitude.
Interesting. Well, thanks, John. This is enlightening.
I have one comment about, about the bus, the B3 bus, that has always bothered me, and that's the, the way the windows are masked off, and that's for two, at least two reasons. One is people walking by can't look in and see that there are, in fact, people riding that bus.
Exactly.
It just looks like a prison bus. And if you're on the bus, you can't look, I mean, I'm sure you can look out, sort of.
Yeah, you can see through it, but it's not the same.
You don't really get to see where you're going, and it's like, the whole point is to, well, part of the point is so that people can see Beacon.
Was that, was that the green bus you were talking about, the one that looks wrapped?
Yes.
I would say blue, but yeah. Yeah.
I'm not a big fan of wrapped buses.
No.
I'm not a fan at all of wrapped buses.
Okay, so we agree.
I just wanted to bring one thing up, which is that some of the funding for the bus comes from the MTA and Metro North, and I think they might have input onto the routing and, you know, it has to service the, the train station, for one thing, since they're using it, they're subsidizing it. And also, there's a lot of federal funding that's involved, and there may be requirements that they have as far as the size and routing and other things that the county is beholden to that you might want to, that might limit the flexibility.
I don't think MTA funds anything in the system at this point. I think they offered to fund it if development happened around the station at one point, but I don't think they fund the, they fund the ferry and they fund other things, but I don't think they fund the bus system. Duchess County gets federal money for their transit system, so they do get federal money, but I'm not sure they get MTA money. I'm not sure of that.
Okay, I just, I just know that there are, you know, it's a complicated system.
Oh, yeah. Yes, and, yeah.
I've tried to look into it.
First, you reimagine the bus system, and then you try to make it happen, and you have to make certain adjustments, hopefully not too much. But the idea is first to, to say, what do we really want?
Yeah. All right, great. Well, I was going to save 10 minutes at the latter part of this part of the meeting to toss around ideas for upcoming future workshops, but we only have two minutes. So I would just request that if, if any of you all have thoughts or ideas on things that you might want to cover in workshop, that you share them through our city email, and then we'll compile them and, yeah. So we're just looking for ideas. Go ahead. You got nothing? Anyway, so we'll start our regular meeting. Welcome everyone to the, what month is this? April, Meeting of the City of Beacon Planning Board. First item of business is to adopt the last month's meeting notes, but first, any notes or comments on potential changes from the group? None? All right, I'll accept a motion to adopt last month's meeting notes.
Motion?
Motion by Jill.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then we had a number of applications on the agenda tonight. The first two, and I'll name them just in case anyone's here for them, Beacon View's townhouses and 1113 Walcott Avenue, submitted by Prophet's Theater. Those two both have been postponed at the request of the applicant, so that means we can move right into our continued public hearing on applications for subdivision. This is a lot merger. And site plan approval for a three-story mixed-use residential and commercial development at 364 Main Street. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Taylor M. Palmer Esquire with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader on behalf of the Appken. Tonight, we are joined by R.A. Siegel, our architect. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we are here for continued review of the subdivision site plan review for 364 Main Street. Just by way, a brief update, R.A.'s already got it up there. Following our last appearance at your March 8th meeting, following our March 8th meeting, we did submit a supplemental submission to your board dated March 29th. That included our updated roof design and building components that were requested by the board. R.A. will speak to the specific updates in just a minute. I did just want to note specifically, we did update the rooftop amenity space. We did also incorporate additional green space in the form of planters, together with additional solar panel locations for accessibility, for future access to solar. We did also update Sheet 1 of the site plan, and specifically that corrected potential future license agreement area. We have had continued discussions regarding that license agreement, so those are coming together nicely. We did also have a chance to review a draft resolution, excuse me, that was circulated by the remote city attorney today. So we did have a chance to look at that and provide limited, very limited comments on that resolution. At this time, I'll just have R.A. come up and just briefly walk the board through some of those changes. But again, we have worked to respond to Mr. Russo, Mr. Clark's comments, and the ARB has sent us back to your board for a complete review.
R.A. Siegel, representing the owner. So basically, we've provided revised plans and renderings, and those are updated based on comments we received through our meeting with the ARB Subcommittee. And I think we picked up most of the things. John Clark noted a few details where the renderings are not fully coordinated with the elevations. And what I was wondering is, can I make those corrections and make that clear on the elevations and, as opposed to going back to the renderer once again?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've had challenges in the past with just such a thing, so I think it's really important that we track back to what's approved, represented in a specific set of documents. And if we can, we can look to the elevations as being that approved set of documents with an indication that, yes, that renderings are provided for a specific purpose and don't necessarily reflect, and again, for the record, that what's being built, what's being approved is represented and is in fact in the elevations and of course, the planning documents.
Right. Yeah, I usually have my, my note on there that describes that the, you know, the renderings are more of an artistic interpretation and the elevations are what is the actual approval.
And again, we'll probably talk a little bit more in detail as the ARB reports out to the board about just exactly what those agreed-to modifications are.
Right, okay. And then in terms of the other comments we received, we will show more of the Salvation Army Church building on the site plan. We had to get some information about that. We're going to specify another Sconce fixture than the one that the site civil engineer had specified on his lighting plan, something more traditional that fits in with the building a little bit better. We'll coordinate those ADA parking spot locations so they're consistent throughout the documents. And then the other thing, as Taylor mentioned, we spoke about the roof plan last month, and what I understood was that there was a couple options. Either we show more, you know, planting or more solar panel. You know, we think there's a good amount of planting up there, and in order for the solar panel idea to be effective, we were going with the option to show more solar locations, if that's going to happen. You know, I think it would be helpful to have more arrays up there. But, you know, I mean, that's, that's also, that, that was our interpretation of the discussion last month.
You mean that it was either or?
Yeah, yeah, I thought, we had, we had talked about it sort of as a choice.
And so you're saying you decided to go with more solar panels?
Yeah, because in order for that system to be effective, you know, having more with. Yeah, because in order for that system to be effective, you know, having more would help that out.
And do we have a plan of that?
Yeah, that's on the roof plan. I'll pull that out. They're, they're just noted in these areas that are mostly white over here. And then you can see how much of the roof deck and planting there is apart from that.
So, it's kind of hard to see from and even gauge from the drawings here. But what percentage of planted area to bare roof area to solar panels roughly are you allocating?
I don't have an area of the actual planted area, because those are planter boxes that are integrated into the roof deck. But, but, you know, but if it's roof deck to solar panel, it's, it's about half and half.
Half and half, okay.
Yeah. And then, a portion of that is planted.
Okay.
And then, we also provided, you can see this rendering, yes, for some more context around how the building fits into Main Street. So, we provided another view that captures a lot more of that. And you can, you can see in this that the proposed little tower piece over the residential entrance is behind the tower of the church. But that, we wanted to clarify that on the site plan drawing as well. That's another view of the building from the east side. So, that, those incorporated some of our discussions with the ARB Subcommittee.
Okay, anything else?
No.
So, on that subject, now may be a good time for the Subcommittee to kind of report back on your progress. I know you guys have all met three times, right? To date, done a lot of work around where we've landed here. So, I don't know, who acts as representative of the ARB? Is that you, John, or one of our fellow board members?
They're the deciders. Yeah, three of them are.
Maybe, Lynn, is it, are you one of them? Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe you just want to kind of summarize where we've landed. And specifically, talk about some of the things that, as R.A. pointed out, aren't necessarily reflected in. And they may or may not be things that you guys all discussed. I'm assuming they would be, but that are to be and should be represented in the elevations.
All right. So, I think some of the key changes, going back to the beginning and the initial presentation, was that the building exterior finish was initially a combination of hardy board and brick. And I think like the west elevation was all hardy board. So, we asked if we could get a more sort of coherent brick exterior. And the applicant agreed to that. We did some changes in the, in the window design. Originally, there were kind of sort of the Juliet balconies with a smaller double-hung windows on either side of them. And feel that the current window shape and layout is kind of more reflective of the surrounding buildings and the, the historic theme of the, of the design. We asked for pilasters to be added to do the vertical breaks in the, in the facade. Because I think initially, some of the facades had, didn't have that, is it 35-foot break in the design? We looked into wrapping the cornice around the east and west elevations a little bit. The front of the building previously, it was only on the, on the south-facing side to kind of get some definition of that, that Main Street-facing portion of the building along the roof line. And then it converts to a simpler cornice as you get into the, the second bay, moving to the north. We actually asked that the, the cornice be adjusted so that we could get a couple of courses of brick exposed above those, the sort of reveals around the windows on the, on the front. Previously, the, the pilasters on the front of the building sort of disappeared into the cornice. And we thought it would, would look a little bit more, it would sort of highlight that design with the three bays on the front. If you had some horizontal courses of brick below the, the cornice that were, that were flush with the rest of the facade face. The square tower at the top of the staircase over the residential entrance, I think we made some adjustments to those, to the window design with the three smaller windows to, to create a little detail that would be of visual interest. We didn't, we didn't want that tower to compete with the steeple on the church. And I think we talked about checking the height of the staircase tower or the bulkhead. You know, it's really like a staircase slash bulkhead onto the roof access to see that it wouldn't be kind of challenging the height of the, of the square steeple on the church. We talked about doing some details in the brickwork to the north of the, of the residential entrance on the east facade, because it was, it was a relatively plain facade initially. And there's been like three sort of recessed panels added to, again, you know, create some, some visual interest. One, you know, the, I think, what, one of the things we talked about were creating enough details that it would break up the bulk of the building a little bit to the eye and gives, you know, smaller elements for people to focus in so that it, that it helps the mass of it be a little bit more adjustable. Kevin, do you have?
Yeah, we also turned, turned the corner on the front with, with that same recessed edge. And then, so I know one of the things that isn't the same on the renderings and the, and the elevation drawings is that the windows actually do have arched masonry openings. They're, they're not showing up that way here. And they're not showing up as pronounced as they would be. But that, that will show up on the elevation drawings.
So, it sounds like ARB offered some pretty significant input and recommendations that the applicant has been amenable to and has incorporated. That's appreciated. So, thanks, Lynn.
Welcome.
One thing we had discussed was getting samples.
Oh, yeah, I got that.
Physical samples.
Yeah, I think the, and I think where we kind of, where we kind of left off, we had some comments, but we didn't, I think. On the, on the west side of the building, the addition is a little bit of a setback from the Main Street facade. We had, we had talked about, you know, how the cornice would be handled on that and whether there was any interest in, in doing something different to perhaps make that look like it was an annex that had, you know, perhaps been added. But I think that was, you know, really just a, kind of some brainstorming, but not, I don't know that we turned that into a real specific ask. We're talking about the, the, the portion of the building on the west elevation that's setback from Main Street. At one point, we kind of discussed whether there could be maybe some changes in the cornice or other details that would, that would give it the sense of an annex that had been added on to an existing building or create a little bit of, but I think ultimately, we didn't have a strong push to differentiate it.
I really felt like it would, it would improve it. And in the same way that the facade that's facing the church had more articulation and breaks, that just a small gesture, there's going to be a parapet already. And it's just a matter of changing the height of the parapet. And it would, it would look like it was a different building. But mainly, it's to articulate the facade a little more. It just, it seemed like that wouldn't be a natural way that a building would get built originally, right? And so, if you made it look a little bit more like it was done at a different, done at a different time, it would both be more articulated and a little more natural-looking in, on Main Street. But I understand, the other, one other comment was, I noticed that you did, this is, we're getting down to the proportions and details that I think you've done. I, I have to admit, you've done a pretty good job all the way around, finessing some of the things like the whis of the piers, the window detailing, the proportion of the windows, the proportion of the size. This isn't the first time you've done this. So, you're, I mean, this is like also really, it's gratifying. But I did want to, there's that detail. And also, the cornice was lifted that, that little bit. And I have to tell you, in my opinion, it almost went up like four courses too high. But I'm not sure how important that is. And I think it's, it's, it's a testament to the level of attention that we're giving this. That the proportions of that one band just below the cornice in between the piers seems a little bit wider than I would have thought. It was a, a sliver. It was like a hairline before.
Yeah, it's kind of, without, without seeing the previous rendering, it's hard to maybe picture. But that, those horizontal courses above the, you know, the cornice came right down to the, there.
And I'll tell you, I, I think it'll still work the way you have it. But I'm, I'm sharing my opinion with you.
I mean, again, I, I can look at the elevation drawings and see how the proportion looks. And that, that'll be what governs, but.
Yep, great, thanks. Any other thoughts by other board members in terms of architectural review? No?
I think it is important to put a note on the plans that says the actual construction is based on the elevations.
Yep.
And that the renderings are to provide a three-dimensional visualization of it. Because certain things don't pop on the, on the elevations. Like those recessed panels. So, you need something like that. But to ask that every light fixture and every plant be accurately portrayed on the rendering is very difficult. Because they change constantly. And the upgrading of them is very expensive, so.
So, I'm just curious.
If that note goes on the plan, I feel a lot better. So that I know that those arched lintels are, are agreed to on the elevations. And so, therefore, they're agreed to in construction.
So, besides the arched lintels, what else? Lighting you mentioned?
The four things that I had, that I saw that were slightly different were the orange lintels, the west side cornice brackets, they show up on this, but not on the elevations. Just on that west wall, the brackets. The front planters are raised in the plans, but not in the rendering. And the lighting fixtures are different.
Okay.
So, those are really pretty, pretty minor elements. And I think the plans and the elevations, as long as it's noted, that's what goes.
You want to see options on, on the light fixtures now, or just?
Might as well, in the full spirit of architectural review, why not? We got brick, let's look at light fixtures.
R.A., is it, is it a glitch in my display, or is there like a, a mask there on the, on the elevation?
Well, that's what you wouldn't see.
Right, but just, but ultimately, the, there would be an elevation of, as constructed from, from ground to the.
These options?
Yeah.
Okay, because it's.
You should be on the mic, R.A.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Use the mic.
Just for the purpose of knowing what's.
Well, I'll give this back to you. Go, go back to your mic. So, as far as these options, I'm curious, what preference does the applicant lean toward?
I, I just pulled some things that were a little more traditional. You know, I don't think he has a, necessarily has a preference. If you guys do, they're similarly priced.
Thoughts? While we're talking about light fixtures, let's just kind of move efficiently. John Clark, any other observations as far as your most recent review that you want to highlight for the applicant or even for the board?
Uh, no, they, he addressed all my comments and said that he agreed to all of them.
Excellent.
Except maybe the green roof. And I, I, we haven't had an opportunity to have solar panels on any of the buildings that we've approved. So, I think that would be a good option.
Yeah.
If we could get more solar panels, you're already putting a green terrace. It's more terrace than green, but it does have some plantings on it. And solar panels are something I'd like to see on a, a building to sort of check that off as when we're done.
Yeah, it sounds to me like the board agrees with you. Mr. Russo, I know there's been a lot of discussion about, and especially in context of recent spring rains, some of the, at least, built-in existing issues around drainage. Just want to highlight some of the elements to this application that go as far as they need to, to mitigate.
So, basically, what the applicant has proposed to do, which we requested several meetings ago, they're curbing the back lot to prevent water from flowing off onto neighboring parcels. They're also back pitching it so that it's staying within the parking lot, flowing out towards Eliza. I understand they have the concerns of flooding there, water running off. So, we looked at burming that area or curbing it to more or less keep everything on-site itself. If there's water coming from adjacent areas, we'll have to deal with that when those parcels come in if they.
So, that curbing or burming, that's happening all along in the Eliza Street parking lot, all along that property line edge.
Right.
Right, so that in effect takes any runoff that right now is making its way over into neighboring property. It's directing it, keeping it on.
It's keeping it on theirs and directing it out towards Eliza.
Right, and so, it's making its way sheet flow.
Sheet flow.
Out onto the street and into, obviously, our system.
Right.
That's good. Any other observations you wanted to make, John?
No, at this time, they've addressed all the comments we previously had.
Any other comments by the board?
Jill, do you want to?
I was going to say, do we make a comment about the lighting? In terms of?
It's the one you like? No.
If I was going to, I would say the third one, if I had a drawthers for me, just personally. The last page.
This one seems a little too fro-industrial. This one seems a little too.
Too Disney. Yeah.
Those are all dark sky compliant, too.
That's good. Yeah, I think you're at least hearing from two of us that there's a preference for the first one. Thoughts? First one.
I would say. Actually, I don't like.
Too like.
I'm not going to lie.
I can live with the, the first one. I would have preferred the third one, but.
I'm just curious, is Jennifer with us?
She was on Zoom, right?
Where did she go?
He's thirsty, he's probably listening in.
He's there, she's not able to see us. There she is.
We can't hear her though.
Can we hear her speak?
Just unmuted, I think.
Because she could have been talking the whole time.
There she is.
There she is.
Can we hear you?
There's no speaker.
Yep.
I think I heard her say it was approved.
Does the sound have to be adjusted on the, the monitor itself, or? Because there's little speakers down there, but there's nothing.
Who knows how to work this gizmo?
Is it, maybe the volume needs to be turned up?
I was going to ask her this, but just as a matter of procedure, John, maybe you know, the architectural review, should that be acted on separately by the board here, or is that rolled into the overall?
It's included in the resolution as far as.
Jennifer, are you sure you're not muted?
No, she's not, not muted. Or she was. She's now. But she took that off. I think she was muting to just observe.
No? How about the guy in the little room? Does he know how to do this?
Wrong guy.
Says she's muted up there.
Well, we got a sound out of the monitor, so we know that the speakers are turned on. Because we got to chime out of it.
So, maybe on Jennifer's end. Okay, well, John helped answer my question anyway. So, we're, we're still at a public hearing. So, if there's nothing else, at least on your end, that you want to share at the moment, please, anyone from the public who has thoughts or comments and would like to share them, you're welcome to.
We're depending on you.
I was hoping there'd be a crowd. Teresa Kraft, Liberty Street.
You're enough of a crowd for us, Teresa.
What's that?
You're enough of a crowd for us.
Thank you. Just listening to that conversation regarding the rooftop usable space for the residents, I'm not sure how safe it will be to sit and relax amongst the solar panels and the reflections of the solar rays. I'm not sure those two really jive together, so I'd rather see less. But then I see that as a fourth floor. So, looking at the visuals and reading the submissions for tonight's presentation, I still do not see where this is beneficial to the residents of Beacon. I hope that the Main Street driveway is eliminated completely from this project. I oppose this height. I oppose this high-density project as it will negate the historic view of the church, the carriage building, and impose on the New Deal-listed post office. As planned, it may look pretty in pictures to some, but in reality, we will only see a side driveway with delivery trucks and cars 24/7, negating the safety of residents and tourists walking and driving on Main Street. It is a potential disaster, and we've had enough of those. And no matter how you look at it, it's still four floors with no Hudson Valley architectural elements put into the fold. We need to be reminded it's in a neighboring historic, it's neighboring historic buildings. In a few short years, Beacon will no longer be referred to as a historic riverfront community, but just another bland megatropolis. So we'll hear, "Welcome to Historic Beacon Brickyards, the new home of the faux bricks."
Thank you.
I'm Stasz Yankowski. I'd like that you make sure that everything that's going to be on the roof is going to be shown. It'd be disaster to have some big boxes appear, maybe air conditioning boxes or whatever. If you look at that huge monstrosity at the corner of Main and Elm, there's some kind of big box up on top, and it just looks ugly. I think there's also one on the monster on Main at 344 Main, so just don't have any thing that appear that's not shown and approved. I, from the last meeting, I'm getting the impression that almost all of the members, if not all of the members of the board, would like to see that driveway on the east side eliminated. I've been advocating for that, and so has Kevin, strongly advocating for it. I think Kevin nailed it last time, and I hope, I don't know if the owner is here, but I hope he's listening. Without that driveway, that building would look a lot nicer. It'd be a much better benefit to all the businesses that want to have stores there with facing that driveway, eliminate the asphalt, put some grass, and if you could put some nice tall trees amongst the grass instead of up against the house, up against the building, that would really help. It would just add a lot more character to it. So I think it'd be a benefit to the owner to get rid of that, and it is a dangerous driveway. And I'm surprised that the board does not have the power to eliminate that driveway. Someone could get killed. I gave a nice scenario that I think is plausible, and, you know.
Mr. Stasz, I think you make a very good point there, and I want to highlight it. We can advocate, one can advocate all they want, however, we can't require it.
I totally understand.
That needs to be made very clear.
It is clear. It's clear to me. I'm just expressing that opinion to the owner, so he would just listen and, you know, add some to the community, get rid of that dangerous thing. That's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
Again, I'll stress the point, the board does not have the power to require that that applicant remove that driveway. I'm going to hyperemphasize it. I appreciate everything you said, but I need it to be clear for the record and for everyone listening. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Raymond Clary, 27 Eliza Street, Beacon. I'd like to talk a little bit, if I may, about first, the drainage that you're considering. I have participated in environmental impact statements for the federal government for over 30 years. The proposed drainage that you're trying to, or going to implement is inadequate. I believe that you need to put in slot drains. It's the same type of drains that the Hamilton Fish parking lot has, and you have the catch basins, just like you have in the municipal parking lots and on the streets, and have all the drainings plumbed into those slot drains and catch basins. So that's my first comment. In reference to the O'Donnell parking lot merger, my concerns as adjacent neighbor is necessity for a high berm and a fence corrected, corrected grade and a slot drain like the other large parking lot areas nearby. Especially, I would like to discuss here the petition, or the petition contributing factor to the flooding downhill into my property. With the recent rains we've had lately, I've got, I can grow cranberries in my backyard. I cannot use it, I can't plant a garden, I can't do anything. And especially, I'd like to discuss the factors to these flooding downhill into my property. So this is just a question, a request or concern before you approve any site plans or move forward with the approval of Mr. O'Donnell's site construction. Number one, I am wondering if the parking lot will be fenced off from all public or private access for safety concerns. If they're going to do that, I'm concerned also about the general public walking through that area. Even though it's private property, people still walk there. I've actually been told that to get off of it by not Mr. O'Donnell's people, but I'm not sure, but I know that there's a lot of handicapped people that walk in that area because they don't want to walk on Main Street because of all the traffic and pedestrians. So at present time, people are walking there because they feel safer. Number, number two, will the encircled berms, grading, and slot drains that are in the other adjacent parking lots, will be put in place before any other construction begins? I hope it does because I'm getting a lot of rain runoff and contamination, trash and such, coming from the O'Donnell parking lot, crossing over Mr. Tom's, which is 23 Eliza in the back, and then coming into my parking, or my property. After several days of the storm, runoff water again coming from Mr. O'Donnell's lot through Mr. Tom's, 23 Eliza Street, that's in the rear portion now, not, not out front, so you'd have to actually walk in to see it. This is going through, again, Mr. Tom's property at 23 Eliza Street in the rear that is combined management runoff, or unmanaged runoff, is causing heavily rusted dilapidation, construction equipment, debris, brick, metal, rebar, ladders, and leftover, and left there for years. All of this is contributing to the percolation of the water, ponding, erosion, and I'm getting contamination from all the rusted junk, or I should say, construction leftover debris from these, from all this, even there's construction debris left in the parking lot there of Mr. O'Donnell's, great big berm-type concrete apparatuses. It's unsightly, but anyhow, to continue on, now there's a footpath that's deeply eroding across, from people walking across Mr. Tom's backyard, going into the O'Donnell parking lot. And this is creating a gully, erosion, and again, more ponding and drainage problems that originally, that just accelerates the runoff from Mr. O'Donnell's property. I do not know if these two construction companies, the Indigo Industry Commercial Construction Property of Mr. Tom's and Mr. O'Donnell's Construction Company, I don't know if they're combined or if they work together or not. That's none of my business or concern. I do know that these two construction companies are connected other than by physical, I lost my place, excuse me. I do know that if these two construction businesses, Mr. O'Donnell's and Mr. Tom's, Indigo Industry Company, are connected other than the physical property connection and attorney's representation, and possibly an easement, because Mr. Tom goes through the parking lot to get his, his equipment from the back end, and with all the weight there, it's sinking down into the mud, creating, creating pondies. So I don't know if they're connected or not, other than with an easement, and it's none of my business if they are. But the point is, is all this is contributing to the runoff of the O'Donnell property into my yard, and I need it addressed and fixed before any construction, this beautiful building they're planning, or whatever, I need this drainage system put in first, if I may, if I can ask that. This has been going on long enough, my wife was here earlier talking about the melt-water drain-off from the property, and I've contributed, maybe not in person, but I sent letters, and my wife has sent letters for you to, to discuss among yourselves. So with that, I want to say thank you very much to the planning board for listening to my complaints and helping me out, and you for addressing this to the Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Tom, or whoever that needs to be taken care of. But I think, I've got a problem, and I'm needing your help with taking care of that before you move any further, or it just escalates into something bigger than it already gets. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And just to note, we have received your letters, those become a matter of public record, so thank you.
Yeah, they're just gave your call.
Yeah, no, we're good. There, I just want you to know, they all, they, this and others are a part of the record, so we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Did you have something?
Possible.
Yep, please. Name and address, please.
Building, South Avenue.
What number, South?
Oh, sorry, 494. That's a really nice drawing, or whatever you call it, but it doesn't show the fourth floor that will inevitably be built. Right? The other thing is, as far as lighting fixtures.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, what do you mean by that? This is a three-story building?
It's a three-story building, and so are all the other ones that then they.
This is a three-story building.
It's going to be limited to three stories.
Okay. What else?
The most important thing about a light fixture is the quality of the light that it throws, not what it looks like.
Very aware of that.
Great.
Thank you.
And also, the drain, I second the drain idea, because right now, you walk under the awning of the building, catatonic from the DMP building, and the rain flows off the building onto your head. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you doing all this work. I really do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We want to thank the public for inputting those comments. We have addressed many of those in prior meetings, some of them were considerations that were previously addressed. For example, fourth story, it is only a three-story building. The applicant's not proposing a fourth story. We did remove some of the, one of the existing driveways from the application. We've worked hard with the board to adjust circulation, safety, as well as addressing where the landscaping is on the site plan to address a lot of those concerns, signage on the property to help do the same. We would note that we did incorporate the request, the suggestions of the city's engineer as far as drainage concern. I think the representation from Mr. Clary this evening, there was mentions of an adjoining property owner, this is not, that property owner, which is, separates our property from Mr. Clary's property, is no involvement in this application whatsoever. You know, there's an additional sheet flow that goes off of the Hamilton Fish Plaza property into Mr. Clary's property. So again, we're implementing the drainage considerations that were reviewed by the city's engineer, so those comments concerning existing conditions are not those post-development conditions that have to meet the approval of the city engineer.
I've got a question for you. I'm not sure if you can do this, but the question is whether the applicant can characterize, and I use the word in its sort of technical capacity, the improvements, right? It's not qualifying, it's simply the improvements being made to the, the parking lot and relative to the runoff situation, whether the applicant can characterize between today and when these improvements are in place, what that means relative to the runoff on this property?
I may defer to Mr. Russo just as far as, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, the idea is not to make an existing condition any worse through the improvements. That's not, that's a very shorthand version of what the actual drainage considerations are here, but one of the comments came about not sending that drainage towards any other properties. It's being, it's being directed towards conveyance systems that would bring it away from those properties rather to any adjoining lots. So whether or not there is any existing drainage onto any of those adjoining properties, I think is the concern that's being expressed, whether that's from any existing conditions or neighboring property, others. We're keeping our, any drainage that we're creating and channeling towards conveyance systems, and that's through the new development proposal, that's through the way that the site itself will be laid out, and any of the drainage structures will function.
Okay, thanks.
John, I do have one question for Taylor. Taylor, is there a way to get Mr. O'Donnell to work on those drainage improvements prior to working on the rest of the site?
We think, yeah, that could be amenable, especially if it'll help in any way on the adjoining property owners, I think that would be inappropriate, or, you know, whether it's during the initial clearing and grading to lay that out, sort of almost as you would during the construction, still fencing and the like, which here it's different, we're already an improved property, but I think that's acceptable.
Yeah, I mean, just, I think that's a really good suggestion, and one that I'm glad the applicant will be willing to entertain, understanding that, you know, there is an extreme situation at the moment, just heard from a neighbor, in regard to that situation, if that, at the outset of the work here, that some of those improvements be addressed sooner or later.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And for the benefit of the public, as we're still in the public hearing, those will be monitored by the city's consultants, so we aren't required by approvals to have that be monitored by, I believe, the building department or Mr. Russo directly, so those are all part of the post-approval conditions. So we'll have to maintain any systems throughout development of the site.
Great. Actually, I've always been curious, I always thought this was a law, but you're, and maybe it's not, you're not necessarily allowed to direct water onto a neighboring property, are you?
You can sheet flow, you can't pipe it directly.
You can't pipe it, okay.
Unless you have an easement, or the drainage easement or other storm or reason.
Okay, that helps me with my conversation with my neighbor.
Let me know if you need a turn.
Thank you. Okay, so we still have open public hearing. Just wanted to ask if there's anybody else here that would like to add their comments to the record? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Jill.
Second.
Second by Len. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I'd love to know if we have Jen up and running, because we do have a draft resolution prepared. You there?
She said she was going to be working, I believe she was going to be working with Etha after this application.
I'm not.
Yeah, she tried to call in, they said that was worse. She does hear Etha typing, and she can hear John.
You're kidding.
And she can hear Mr. Clary.
She's back again. She's waving.
She's waving. Hi. So I guess we got to do this through sign language.
I could bring.
You can go mute off.
Yep, you're muted off, but we still can't hear you. Now, yeah, now you're not muted.
Is there something like a Zoom setting where it's like, you know, use my computer audio instead of my headset or something like that, that we need to adjust?
You can hear us, though, right? Yes, okay. So maybe, maybe we'll just do this through nods and thumbs up.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I could call, we could call and I could have her.
Yeah, that might work. Let's try that.
Sorry, Jennifer, I'm gonna call you now and we'll hear, we can hear you on speaker through the microphone. 2022.
Hi, Taylor.
Oh, there you are. Oh, wait.
I think you can hang that up.
There's gonna be a cheap feedback.
Well, some feedback.
Oh, this is even worse.
I picked the worst time to fix this, I guess, because, uh, can you? Try speaking again.
So let's do this. Jennifer, if you would mute on your end again. Just mute.
It's really hard to hear cause the, um, the presenter box and the city beacon box are both unmuted.
So if we could ask you to mute again, just mute completely.
No, I can't hear at all.
Do you want me to turn that off again?
Yeah, if you can turn off what you did there. Call her again and then, thanks. This is fun.
My phone is not on.
But wait till.
Okay.
And there's a delay.
Oh, wait.
Oh.
Wait.
That's so bizarre. Say something again.
Yes.
Yes. I, we can hear you now, just very lowly.
Maybe bring the speaker up on the.
Just not too high.
The smart screen, yeah.
Yes. Len's just turning up the volume, Jennifer. Just one sec. It was the other one you did, Len.
Yeah, but that's, that puts back to the, uh.
Goes back to, yeah, right. It's gonna go back to that feedback.
Try speaking. Jennifer, do you mind speaking?
Jennifer, do you wanna try speaking one more time? Jennifer, you can hear me. Please try speaking.
Remember, there's a delay also. We're talking to a 22nd Jennifer delay.
You gotta keep speaking so we can try to hear what you want.
Why don't we do this? Let's just mute her and then do this through, do this through your cell. That's probably easier.
Sorry. It's too complex when you're in orbit to be able to.
That'd be FaceTime audio, Jennifer.
Are you FaceTiming me?
That was not intentional. All right.
Okay. So we were, that was fun. We were at, uh, draft resolution. So Jen, we do have that, um, with us. Uh, is there anything about the resolution you want to make, um, us aware of just relative to, um, any qualifications?
So, um, I think the question is, is there anything that you should be aware of in the draft resolution? Um, the resolution has all of your standard, um, conditions.
Yep.
It includes, um, not just John Clark and John Russo's memos, but also the city traffic engineer's memos, if there's any outstanding comments there. Um, there were also, there's also direction to add notes to the plans based on prior discussions at the meetings regarding refuse pickup, um, being limited to off-peak hours and delivery vehicles being limited to a maximum size of a 30-foot box truck. And for those deliveries and moving, for, uh, trucks for deliveries and moving purposes, um, must be coordinated to avoid conflicts with onsite parking operations. So those are all discussions from prior meetings on this application.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
There's also.
Yep.
Yeah, there's also a condition for, um, the applicant to, um, you know, with respect to the, the easement or license agreement for, um, the, the natural market property, um, to, to, you know, to, to work in good faith. And I mean, that easement is necessary or license agreement is necessary that the applicant will work in good faith to negotiate that.
And then as well, we do capture, um, ARB review comments. So along with the, um, approval, this resolution, we will be also capturing, um, approval of the building characteristics features design, right?
I'm sorry. You wanted the resolution to capture something and I didn't quite hear that.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, just as far as the ARB and the architectural review, um, cause I did, I read through, I didn't necessarily notice, but the approval that we'd be granting does, does extend to and capture the architectural characteristics, right?
Yes, that is correct. This resolution also approves the plans that show the architectural, um, elevations.
Great. Okay. So at this point, um, I think we're gonna, um, ask for a motion to, did we already close the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. So we're gonna, I can, um, yeah, do you have something, Len?
On the, uh, on the approved elevation, shouldn't we be able to see the entire building envelope, even though the Islamic Teaching Center is going to essentially block out, you know, do the alley that, you know, you're not gonna be able to see that. But for approved plans, shouldn't we show the entire elevation so that you can see, you know, how it's, how it's to be built?
That's a good point. I thought you were pointing that out as an anomaly of this print, but is, is that the intention of that, this drawing? Is, is that, that area is blocked out in the building because of the adjacent building?
Yeah, just visually it's blocked out, but I'll, I'll show it on the final elevation. So, so it's, it's gonna be, there won't be windows there, but it's gonna be brick wall.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's a good point. Sorry. I thought that was just a glitch of the program. So that's an element that we probably want to make sure that you capture, uh, as a part of the approved list of drawings here, those update, updated drawings representing the, the treatment of that part of the building.
Yeah, that'll be.
Okay. So I'll, I'll accept the motion to adopt.
Did we decide on a sconce?
Oh, yeah. I thought we'd, um, agreed that, and again, these all, these all meet code. These all meet light throw requirements, night sky, right? So of the three, it sounded like the preference was, and we did convey this, um, fixture number one, top fixture.
We agreed to that fixture.
Great. Anything else? Motion to adopt this resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Randall. Second by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. And unfortunately, it's at two at the back end of the application. I will be here online with you, so we do need to bring.
I was gonna say, we're gonna make the next applicant call, Jennifer.
I usually pull my, could we pull the, uh, extension up, but I'm with you for the signage. So if Jennifer needs back, we can.
Thank you. Great. Uh, we'll move to, after a quick two-minute break, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the continued review of applications for site plan approval and subdivision approval to Cross Street, quote unquote, for Cross Street, 172 Main. Quick break.
I think, I, my feeling is that reasonable owner will put ballers in and repave and put outside tables in.
I don't know why.
There's no reason why they can't. Like, we don't need to force landscaping on that, I think. I guess there's nothing that, like, physically, I think that is permanent, right?
No, and.
There's such a. It's what he did before. He sold it. Once he makes it clean up.
Yep, just off the, the parcel.
It's a big, couple of years' work.
I know. I didn't, you didn't talk to me about that.
No, no, that's fine. It's America. You're allowed to make money.
No, it's like, it's, it's guaranteed. That's the problem. It's guaranteed such an extreme, it's just carrying over the social fabric. It's based.
It's, it's the hundred billions. That's what's killing you. Couple million here is it. And, and like, what I'm worried about is the permanent infrastructure. Sounds like permanently never, never gonna be able to build.
Nothing that you can, yeah.
But you can't build one. It's really expensive now.
Right.
It was cheap when the, the city was being abandoned.
That's why, do it. Here's a, here's an idea for a, um, a future training, talking about all of the properties that, that would be developable and some conceivable future which are un, which are residential, which are not, you know, the firehouses. And we need to, if people are getting real mad now over the size of the buildings, we're gonna need to change something. And, yeah, in the plan, I think you have some way, you gotta tell somebody, just because you can purchase it as well. You can't create some massive structure on there.
It's totally, it's done all the time. And it's probably one of the best ways to, to, um, uh, keep the picture of a city, even if it's a 16-foot building in a, uh, a boring building, if they're all small, there's a fabric that's, it's one of the big box stores in Main Streets, which I've seen. There was an old Navy that went in Lawrence campus, right? And it was like 10 storefronts. And they made it look like five, but you know what? It just still was.
And it's, you know, you can just, you know, use all of these similar lot-sized buildings and then each time we get ready to do applications, whoop, it's this massive, you know, and we have.
And in New York City, New York City doesn't have, it has a chaotic fabric. There are whole blocks that get to the, that's part of the fabric that exists is people assemble lots, they build towers, they build needles. There's no, there's, there's not a wall of, I don't know, even a left, right?
Aren't you IT, aren't you IT tech now retired? You retired? But you still have knowledge. Can't just whip out a quick patch?
How about a high-risk presentation for a future training session? Um, all of the developable lots that are still out there on Main Street, whether it could be the firehouse closing or similar properties, and what does that imply for us if people don't want every significant Main Street development to be a building that's three or four times the size of traditional Main Street?
You're talking about city-controlled properties?
And, and anything else privately owned or city-owned, something that could, that could be, you know, that could, that could be the site of a significant improvement. Um, like, for instance, I have no idea what the deal is with the old municipal building. If that firehouse closes next to it, who could buy what, do what?
Yep.
And then we don't have any way of controlling.
But it doesn't mean it's a public hearing.
Developments, about anywhere.
Except for Rizzo.
And so maybe that needs, and maybe that needs to be kind of put out there for people to mull over if they don't like the size of these projects.
Yeah.
They're too massive. Have a tool to diminish that. And it's true, but when you look at these streetscapes and see the existing lot size, lot size, lot size, optics, and each new one is a, you know.
Yep. Yeah. Well, again, I think it had, it had been and has been a part of the comprehensive plan to do just that, somewhat of an inventory that's for, so forms the basis for, you know, a zoning review and then a potential rezoning. So it's certainly something that, you know, we could look at again. Um, yeah, I would maybe, you know.
We're getting the high side in front of us.
Oh, we're good? Evening. Thank you.
Am I on? Joe Forehand, the architect.
Austin Harris.
Austin Harris. So after last month and hearing what the planning board said. After hearing last month's comments, we've made changes to the architectural and engineering drawings. The building continues to conform with Pulp requirements in CMS District. Use remains the same, just under 5,000 square feet of retail at the ground level. Nine affordable senior apartments, nine marker rate apartments. We've added a green roof, garden terrace, and, and a greenhouse onto the roof. Uh, with regard to 172 Main Street, uh, the pendant is, is back atop the building. And we've added notes to the drawings indicating that we're gonna remain as much of the existing facade as we can, with the exception of the residential lobby door, which we need to modify and re-assess. So the design of the, uh, the corner of the building, main and cross, has been modified. And the elevations on A8 and the elevation looking south. We've modified the, uh, off-street, off-street parking. Our intent is to be in full compliance. So there is a little bit of a question that we have, we'd like to hash out. We, uh, we're, we, we feel we need 25, you know, per, per the rezoning. And we would like to hear, uh, whether you're, if you're with that. But it's our intent to, uh, not let the parking slow up the process. So if we can talk about that tonight, then it'll be great. We've reviewed Mr. Park, Mr. Russo's comments and we'll make the changes and additions for the next revision. And we'd be happy if we can begin dialogue with the ARB to, uh,
Yep. Okay. So I think there's a couple of things we gotta get registered around first. Um, one of them, top of list is just, you know, understanding the disposition of your, um, your current parcel and the conjoining of your parcels, understanding then how that relates to, cause we've gotta get into SECA, right? And making sure that's aligned and can inform SECA properly. And then obviously making sure your EAF is in, have you submitted EAF at this point? Yeah. So anything I think, and we want to touch on, then, um, just as far as your subdivision, what is, what is the status and, and how can we, I think the, the questions are more around, how do we, how do we make sure that we're confirming a recording, right?
If their lots were previously developed through a subdivision and they merge them back together, they actually have to come to this board with a subdivision eliminating those lot lines. So they're going to have to do some research to see if the lots that they're working with, the three parcels when this project started, um, were part of a subdivision that may have been back years ago or not, to see, uh, how they were created. If they weren't created through a subdivision, then it wouldn't have to go through that process of bringing it back to this board, is my understanding from the attorney.
We still don't have her on.
She's there, but.
Yep.
Um, as far as the EAF, they did originally submit one. We did ask for some revisions. You need to submit a revised EAF. We didn't receive a revised EAF this submission.
Um, okay. Thank you, John. So, so any, just as far, I'm curious, just as far as your understanding of how your parcel, what's the disposition of your parcel relative to what John just mentioned, the, the subdivision? Where does it stand? Where does it stand?
Hi, Daniel Oliver of Hudson Land Design. My understanding is that the applicants had gone to the county and done a lot line combination on those three.
Okay.
All right, so that was the process, and now it is technically one tax parcel.
Right, but the city code requires-
Understood. I don't believe it was part of a subdivision. People try to track it back. I'll see if I can get some deeds from the survey and see if we can track it back far enough to figure out where it was created originally.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so, a little more work to do there. And again, it's my understanding that that has some bearing on your environmental assessment, right? So, that's part of the EAF update. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure my notes are complete from this afternoon, but did we declare lead agency? We did.
We did, and we circulated the lead agency and received your comments, but they've been-
So, we're now, we're now lead agency. Great. So, let's go through, I know the engineers, the engineer and our planning consultant had some specific comments, which I know you've reviewed and are amenable to taking on board, but I just want to hit some of the highlights. Maybe we'll start with you, John?
All right. First, I want to compliment you on a couple of things, because we don't usually say good things in our comment letters, but, you know, the rooftop plan is excellent. I like to see a really good roof plan. And a greenhouse on top is a really nice feature that we've never seen on any building, so I'm sort of excited about that. The parking lot improvements on one fifty-two, nice, you know, because it's pretty awful over there right now, or, you know, needs improvement at least. So, that's good. They are providing, fifty percent of the units are affordable, targeted at people really in need, seniors. So, that's commendable. So, most of my comments are smaller things. The, I think the main one that seems to be a problem is that the parking lot shown on Tanton Cross isn't within the property lines. And if it can be put in the property lines, that's, if you want to use those spaces, they've got to be contained within the property lines.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we have a survey forthcoming on that. That's a very old survey that we're using, and it's in concept right now, but we will not define that. That will be forthcoming.
Yeah. So, like, most of my things, I think, are small, pretty relatively easily changed. You know, I think you'll have to go to the Architecture Review Board, obviously, Subcommittee. But I don't see any, you know, you don't have a landscaping plan, lighting, things have to be, you know, it's pretty well self-explanatory, I think, the comments.
Thanks, John. Just on the subject of ARB, my feeling is that it is a little bit early to recommend you, given some of the things that John just mentioned that you might want to bring to an organized ARB meeting. So, I'm just thinking, I'd get any input from the, some of the ARB members, the rest of the board thoughts?
One thing I'm looking forward to is towards the end of that ARB process, getting physical samples is something that we've started to do-
My question was more timing, Kevin.
Oh. When?
Do you feel, you guys are ready to recommend this to ARB, or you want more time? Do you need more information from the applicant?
I don't think the envelope's going to change that much, right? The outline, the bulk, the, as far as the site, right?
We're hoping to begin the dialogue, because you know how important it is.
If that's the case, we probably could proceed, yeah.
You feel the same, Len?
Jill, are you okay with that?
It depends on what it is. My schedule's really-
That's a whole different, you know, schedule-wise aside, do you feel like we have enough information in the submittals to start the ARB process? I would agree with Kevin that we can probably begin.
We did talk about getting involved earlier.
Okay. So, it sounds like we can, we can then recommend scheduling an ARB review, an initial ARB review, and if we have subs-
You know, I can't do it this Friday. I know often we do it on the Fridays after the meeting, but-
Yeah, we'll work to schedule it for when it works for people's schedules, so-
Can I ask John Clark one question, and it's pertinent to ARB and preparing for it? When we last met, John, you made a comment about the structure that's to be demolished, which is that, that's for Cross Street, correct?
Yes.
There was a, in the, you know, historical structure survey, I think you said that there was some detail inside the entrance, some wainscoting or paneling, that maybe was worth saving. And you had, you didn't go into it in detail, but you had made a comment, you know, would the applicant consider the potential of salvaging this and reincorporating it in some meaningful way perhaps into the new structure?
They did put a note in the plan to that effect, that they're going to try to do that.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so, yeah.
Is that an interior element?
It's exterior.
It's an exterior element.
Inside the doorway, but not inside the door.
I understand.
Okay, great. So, motion to recommend the applicant to the Architectural Review Board.
Motion.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Kevin, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, so, that takes care of that. Anything else at the moment? Great. So, let's, let's hear from our consultants on that.
There was the letter from Hudson River Housing, and maybe that's muddying up the waters.
Well, there was no justification as to how they just derived that three is sufficient. They've just made a blanket statement, three parking spaces is sufficient. Is this based upon studies at other facilities of a similar nature? How did this be derived?
I feel that their operation is, when it's based upon, in our zoning table, we're indicating six spaces. Is, do you consider that adequate?
That meets code, yeah. For senior housing, this is dedicated senior housing.
We're stating on the submission that we need twenty-five, and we're actually kind of providing additional spaces. So, that's-
Right. The only, the only help that that letter provides is that you're providing, I think, four on the site itself, on the main site, with access to the door, to the senior apartments. So, if you can provide three of those for the seniors, that, you know, that you don't want to have your elderly seniors, six spaces be a half a block away. So, you know, if you can get Hudson River Housing to provide a little more detail, you know, how they came to that conclusion, that just bolsters your argument. But if you're willing to provide six spaces for them, it meets code. And I think everything else meets code, so having to, just having the connections to be able to walk between those spaces, I think your parking is okay.
Well, the other thing I was looking at with regards to the parking table is you should also account for the other uses on the sites. Ten Cross Street, you haven't told me what the use of that is, what the parking is required for that. So, even though we're building out all this parking, we still have to make sure that there's a total number of parking spaces that's sufficient to serve your project along with the other uses that are going to be on those other sites.
Include that, actually.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Russo, as far as your review, you want to highlight for the applicant or the board?
They have a lot of information to continue to provide with regards to development of grading, drainage, and easements across the sites, which they've noted they will provide in the future. And as Mr. Clark alluded to, the lighting and landscaping plans. So, that's it for right now, until they provide more information.
Great. Thank you. Anything else by the board? Okay, great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be the continued review of an application for special use permit and site plan approval for the Mirbo In-Ins Spa at Howland Is Safe. Oh, excuse me, I jumped ahead, forgive me, I'm so sorry. It's getting late. This is the continued review of an application for multi-family residential sixteen West Main Street.
You guys are good.
You guys are good. I just jumped ahead on the agenda, so, sorry. Just trying to keep everybody on their toes. That's, that's one way to speed up a meeting. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, for the record, my name is Diego Villarreal, I'm with the firm JMC. I'm the engineer and planning consultant representing the applicant. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Steve Spena, who unfortunately couldn't be here this evening. I know he's been with your board for the last several meetings, going through this application with you. So, I am filling in tonight. I've had an opportunity just to go through the entire project with him. Since the last meeting, it's really been taking an opportunity, going back and addressing comments that's been provided by your staff, including the engineering and planning comments. Just a quick recap, so everybody is aware, I know it's been some time since we've been before your board, but the site itself is approximately one point five acres. The application has essentially remained the same and includes sixty-two residential units in the four-story building. There is sixty-two parking spaces that are proposed as part of the development plan, and access is provided from West Main Street as well as Bank Street. There's those two access points. The West Main Street driveway is the full movement access, both in and out. And then, Bank Street is limited to a one-way entrance in because of site distance considerations. I know a number of these items were vetted with board and with the consultants leading up to this initial meeting, but I thought it would be good just to recap quickly the overall project. Since the last meeting, again, there's been a number of comments that we've worked to address. And I think the last two comment letters that we received demonstrates that we've really worked and tried to address as many of the comments as possible. The last comment letters we received just recently had just a few outstanding items that we needed to clean up regarding some of the engineering and planning items that are still left. As far as the last round of comments, there were a number of changes that were made, more from a design standpoint, that really got into the nitty-gritty related to the foundation design. That was one of the big items, I believe, was a discussion of this board during the last meeting, primarily related to the piles that were proposed. Since the last meeting, we've worked with the geotechnical engineer primarily to address the comments regarding the foundation design, and they went back and relooked at the piles as opposed to using driven piles, what it would take to go to a drilled pile system. And again, the engineer relooked at all the work, he updated his geo-tech report and included recommendations for a drilled pile system for the portion of the building that needs to stick on piles. Big difference between the two, as opposed to that constant banging to install those. It's a much less invasive process, much more, it's more similar to active construction that you would experience on-site on a daily basis. Even the geo-tech engineer referred to it as really not much different than excavating and pouring for a foundation. You're really drilling and digging and then pouring the concrete to put it in place. So, you're not dealing with that more invasive driving of piles on a regular basis. So, they came up with a designed system for that. And we tried to really narrow it down, try to identify the location of it. I think they went as far as identifying ninety-seven driven piles that would be needed, and it would probably be done over a one-month period. In addition to that, there was a lot of comments related to the structural design of the retaining walls because of their proximity to the property line, specifically on Bank Street, how that wall is going to be constructed, and the different types of walls that are being utilized as part of the project. Again, working with the geotechnical engineer, there were plans that were developed for those different types of retaining walls, and it really got classified into three different types of systems. A soldier pile wall, which is more of a shitting and shoring type wall that allows us to install it up against the property line, but doesn't require you to excavate much further behind it. So, we're able to install that wall along the, let's point to it here. That's not the word, because of the point on the screen, here I try. But the wall up against the Bank Street portion, yep, right there, because of the proximity to the roadway, the intention to maintain the sidewalk, not impact the roadway in any way whatsoever, that system's been designed as a soldier pile wall, and that would be faced with a finished concrete system. The other types of walls are gravity block retaining walls or segmental block retaining walls. All of the walls on-site would be done in that fashion. There are easements now shown on the plan with the adjacent property owners, where we do require some temporary and permanent easements associated with that. Again, all of those details had been worked out in advance to a point where I think everybody was comfortable with the current design and the feasibility of that. Again, we did feel we addressed the majority of the comments. The last section that I'm going to touch on real quickly is stormwater management. There was a number of things related to stormwater management and the connection into the municipal system in West Main Street. We've worked, addressed a number of those comments, modified some of the alignments and some of the elevations, and appropriately addressed the outstanding comments that were there. I think that's, that really just gives you an overview of where we stand right now. I think the intention or the hope by the applicant at this point is we are, obviously, after a dialogue and some conversation, hopefully we've addressed enough of the comments at this point where we can fully schedule what we're doing, which I don't believe has been bad.
So, we still need to talk about getting you through SECR.
Absolutely.
Right? So, there's a couple of things. You have a parking special permit that we need to talk about and discuss in terms of sharing our recommendations or other thoughts with the city council, so that's number one. The other is understanding where you're at with SECR. There's a question about a lot merger and the subdivision plat related to your application that would need to be rolled into our SECR review. And then, we can talk about scheduling for next month a SECR public hearing.
Yeah.
Yep. So, let's maybe do a quick round robin with the consultants on their observations, just to make sure that we're all aligned.
Do I need to touch on those other, or?
Yeah, let's, let's go to the consultants first, and then we'll come back to those two items, because there'll probably be more conversation amongst the board here as well. So, John, Mr. Clark?
We want the fixtures, the lighting fixtures and the specifications, a summary, you know, the short version, not the catalog version, on the site plan itself, not just attached in a supplemental thing. We want final approval on the documents. So, just take the lighting fixture illustration and the CRI, the color index, all those sorts of things that are required in the code, and put them on the plans themselves.
Right on the plans, no problem.
We need to have scaled elevations. Right now, everything you've done is off renderings, which have been through the Architecture Review Subcommittee. But now that we're getting close to agreement on the architecture, if that's true, the final package will need elevations, scaled elevations with floor-to-floor heights and building height and materials listed on them. The rooftop plan, we need a complete rooftop plan. Right now, you just show a partial rooftop plan. And, and the partial rooftop plan shows a storage room, a bathroom, and a kitchen, which do not meet the setback requirement for the roof. You have to be fifteen back from the edge of the roof for non-bulkhead sorts of things. Even bulkheads have to be back. So, your bulkheads are fine, but you've put in front of the bulkhead, storage rooms, and a bathroom, and partial kitchen, those have to all be moved back from the front edge of the roof so that there's a fifteen-foot step back on the fourth floor for any sort of bulkhead or elevator shaft or whatever. The other thing that I think the board needs to discuss, and we have to figure out how to handle this, is the site distance plan. Because as it's shown, it would require the removal of eighteen parking space, or thirteen parking spaces on West Main Street. This is a designated commercial district. It's, I think, unacceptable to take street parking away. There'll certainly have to be an adjustment for the new driveway, cars will have to be removed, but you can't be taken, or, we have to come up with a solution such that you don't have to take- don't have to take parking away from in front of a hardware store where it's needed. So one of the things I discussed with the engineer, and maybe it's acceptable, is that you have the sightline setback 14 and 1/2 feet from the curb, and it's really that the standards are from the traveled way.
From the traveled way.
Which is where the existing parking is now, so you can move that up eight feet. That would help with the site distance on the far perimeters, I think, I'm hoping.
Absolutely. It would definitely help if we're able to shift that, and that's acceptable to look at it that way, which certainly can.
Right, and I think you-
And we can pivot and adjust it accordingly.
I think you should discuss that further with your traffic engineer.
Yeah.
And also discuss it with the city's traffic consultant. I know their traffic report was submitted, I don't think we've received a review on that yet.
From the city's consultant?
From the city's consultant.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
So we'll see what his thinking is on that.
We could certainly look at it both ways, but it would definitely cut down on, or it would improve the visibility along that.
So this obviously has an impact on parking, right?
Yes.
Relative to what might happen with that site distance and its impact on-street parking, right?
Yeah. They need the parking requirement for their property.
Yeah.
But it would affect the property that's in front of neighbors' properties, the way it's currently set up, and I'm hoping for some sort of balance so that we don't have to lose a lot of on-street parking up the road.
Yep. What bearing would this piece have on their special use, or their, what they're talking to the city about?
Well, there's that rear lot, which is in a residential district.
Right.
And so therefore, it has to be approved by the council.
Yep.
So that's a special permit, from what I understand from the city attorney, is that the planning board attorney said that first we have to complete SECRE before you can move on to that special permit review by the councils.
That I understand. I was just curious about what bearing the site distance and street parking has on that special permit.
No, it doesn't have anything on the-
That answers my question.
On the onsite property, it's the on-street property.
Got it.
Parking.
But it is tied to SECRE, right?
It is tied to SECRE, and it's tied to a recommendation from this board as well. Both are required to go to the site.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I was clear-
So we want to get through SECRE as the first priority.
Understood.
Before we can move on to that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the board and I was clear on whether those two were independent issues. Got it, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Yeah, great. Mr. Russo.
As part of your demolition plan, you're going to be removing the sidewalk along West Main and Bank. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic down West Main. You're going to have to come up with a plan to ensure a safe pedestrian access while you've got the sidewalks removed. I'd like to see something on the plans with regards to that.
I think so.
Snow removal, I still don't believe you have enough on-site, although you say it's going to be removed off-site. You need to take a look, how quickly is it going to be removed off-site after a storm event? I mean, a lot of the projects have put within 24 hours that it's hauled off-site, because if you get another storm event back-to-back-
You have to take care of it.
Right, and you need to provide the parking on your site, and if you're filling it with snow, you're going to be deficient.
Completely understood. We worked with the applicant, the applicant was willing to put that as a condition, and it would be something that they would work into their maintenance for the property.
It does look like there's room for snow, additional snow storage on the rear portion here. They have a guide rail there now.
They have a guide rail. It might be some room.
So if you move the guide rail back, you could use that for snow storage perhaps.
We can look at it as well, yeah. We definitely tried to utilize some of that area there, but-
Right, for the amount of storage that they have, or areas, and the actual amount of impervious that they're going to be plowing, it's, especially depending upon the size of the storm event, it's not enough. We still have concerns with regards to utility hookups out into West Main, as far as separation distances between one another, locations, and there's some cleanup that has to be done with regards to erosion and sediment control.
Great, thank you. Anything at the moment around the board? I do want to ask about ARB and where we left off. I don't know, maybe we'll start with that. So I know you have been in front of the ARB at least once, as I see one report here, but Len, or Kevin, or Jill, maybe you can characterize where we left off? Not the full review, but just in terms of-
Where the process is?
Yep.
We have a report from, on our last ARB meeting, we had a few of them. I, I'm not 100% sure if all the aspects, all the things that we discussed are reflected in this plan.
They're not.
And I'll just leave it at that.
They're not.
So, okay.
So maybe they want to take another look at the previous report document, they have that, and then-
They should.
I can give you a summary of what we did, but I think most of the items were addressed, we can review that, if you want to do that quickly.
We want to save it for the next ARB meeting?
But I think we were referred back to the poll.
I can't remember. I can't recall if we-
Looks like you've been, you've been in front of the ARB once.
I think it was twice.
It was twice?
Yeah.
Am I seeing, I'm seeing one report here, or is this two combined?
Well, that, this was the last one, which was in September.
Got it.
I remember some of the larger issues we talked about, but-
I remember raising, guess what, balconies.
Yeah, I was going to address that in the summary.
Okay, it looks like you want to address it, so I'll let you.
I mean, just so we have, it's been a while, and that meeting was in September.
That's why, I'm almost thinking, I'm inclined to ask you to come back to ARB.
Are these elevations current?
Yeah, these are.
Okay. So, I raised two issues at the ARB that I was at, I don't know if it was the last one, the most recent.
Yeah, I mean, basically, you know, we talked about possibly doing recessed balconies. The owner didn't want to go that route, because, first of all, it's a difficult detail to water, it takes a lot of square footage away from the apartments, which are not that huge anyway, so, you know, I did discuss it with them, they didn't want to go that route.
Okay.
Okay. I feel very strongly about this, having grown up in, with, around a lot of buildings that had a lot of balconies that were not used because they were this design.
Right.
Because what happens is people don't want to be on display. They put somebody on display, and so what happens is they end up being used for storage, and then people complain about balconies in general, because people just use them for storage and they look junky. So the point of having a half-in, half-out balcony is that you're setback and that you can view, you know, passersby or nature or whatever, instead of being on display. So I understand the waterproofing issue, the square footage is negligible, really, if you do it right. So that's where I left that. The other point that I, that I raised at the ARB was the entrance, the, let's see, what is that, easternmost entrance, that there's that dead space that is, looks to me like a potential hazard at nighttime. There's no, I mean, it can be lit, but there's no, like, eyes from the street on that area, so. And those are, those are residential, right, those units at street level right there?
They're live work.
Live work, yeah.
So you're talking about at the southeast corner of the building?
That's, yeah, southeast.
Where you have a real difference in elevation between the-
Yeah, and we were going to coordinate how to, I mean, first of all, light it and then also plant it, and, you know, so that it becomes like something.
Again, those items that you just mentioned, that you're going to do haven't necessarily been reflected.
Right, and those are the two items that haven't been reflected, that are not part of other ones.
Yeah, so again, I'll ask more of the ARB, whether you guys think it's necessary and appropriate for a more focused review in another ARB meeting?
I'd have to say yes.
I mean, so we'll look at that corner, the owner doesn't want to change the balcony later.
Understood.
Should we get that setback question resolved in the, in the submittals before we, before we-
What do you mean setback?
The roof. Didn't we, didn't we just go through that? Or was that, or am I-
I'm sorry.
Of the bulkheads? John's comment about elements-
Am I mixing up projects, or, I'm sorry, am I hallucinating? Did we, did we just have a comment before that some of the bulkheads didn't meet the required 15-foot setback on the roof?
Yes.
So I was going to say, should we get that all sorted and get revised drawings before we do the ARB?
Yeah, but the ARB doesn't have to deal with that.
No, but it just, it just, I mean, it impacts the overall look and feel, right, so-
Absolutely. And also, I have to tell you, I know what the comments say, but the color scheme here, and we're going to have to start looking at actual materials rather than just the renderings, is jarring, right? The red and the yellow, whatever that brick color is.
Yeah, I have examples of that.
Right?
If you want to do that in-
Yeah, I think that's something we should probably do some, spend some time refining and making more subtle and sophisticated than what we're seeing here.
Yeah, I think it's necessary. Thank you. Okay. I guess the other item we can discuss is entertaining a motion to set SECRE public hearing for next month. I'll accept the motion.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, at this point, what else can we do for you?
I think we're all set. You did have a question regarding the merger of the three lots that is part of the plans identified on there.
You actually have to develop a subdivision plat?
Yeah, it's simply identified on the layout plan right now, but we can develop a plat and include that in the next submission for you.
Great.
That just identifies the three lots and how they're being merged together.
Thank you.
Have to formally do a subdivision application.
They would have to do a subdivision application also.
Okay.
Great. It's odd, it's a merger, right, so to call it a subdivision, but-
That's what it's called.
It is what it is.
We're eliminating lot lines, so it's-
I get it.
It's like what we did on 364, it's the same thing.
I know, I know. It's just, it doesn't comport with my brain, but whatever. It is what it is, thank you.
I did have one more question about, what was the rental structure proposed for this building?
The rental structure itself?
John, do you know?
They're going to be for rent, and they'll be the 10%, probably below market credit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Have a nice evening.
Nice.
Okay, so, now, to the next agenda item, one I was so eager to get to before. This is the continued review, where do I intend to go? Of an application for a special use permit and site plan approval, Mayor Bowe in and Spa at Howland Estate. Good evening.
Good evening. We were here last December to conduct a study, and we submitted all of our documents a couple of weeks ago, for what we're doing, it's a great deal to review, I know, but our, our design team is here, David Vois, in court from Arrow Street, my partner Jonathan Delkhouse, Henry Thomas of LRC, and Hunter Doherty of Hudson Land Design. So what we submitted is substantially the same as we discussed back in December, and the plan will extend, there's a lot more reading on the site plan than basically, you know, what we submitted a couple of weeks ago. So Henry will talk about the site plan, and David will talk about the architecture. We have received John Russo and John Clark's comments. We haven't digested them, we're working through those, we're the design team yet, but we will be submitting, obviously, a lot of additional information for, for your review. There's a couple of things I wanted to point out, kind of our approach, the site plan. Next one? Yeah, so we, maybe a little, well, this, this shows the overall master plan for the site, and we didn't want to segment our focus, you know, for right now, which is the hotel and spa. There's five cottages, and then there's the Bennet house, but it all sits on 64, 65 acres. But this is really the initial phase that we're looking at, but we did want to identify, which was in our submission, some future phases. We have a resort farm, and these are primarily, you know, resort amenities. The resort farm is basically going to be feeding herbs and lavender and everything for our kitchen. There will be a public component, but there might be a small gift shot there as well. We also, the large oval along Grand View is future resort cottages, these are rental, it's on seven-acre parcel, you know, it might be 10 or 15 rental cottages, but we just don't have a site plan developed for that, we wanted to identify, and it's outlined in our submission exactly where it is. All of the water and sewer improvements that we're bringing into the site to service the hotel and spa will also serve that area. Then the last section is the restoration of the Tyrolean to school and some recreation areas, including, there's a tennis court down there, we'll have some, some dedicated parking, that might be an event center, you know, some recreation, that could be a kayak in the pond, so there's two ponds that are interconnected. We don't know exactly what the order of these will be, I mean, most likely it's the Tyrolean to school and the recreation, which might be the next, but the focus right now is really on everything we're doing, you know, at the Howland Estate.
I had a question about the phasing and just that, the timing of such, and whether your application is for the full Magilla, or whether the phasing is such that you'll be back to us for different applications related to the phasing.
We'll be back to you for site plan approval for each of those.
Each of those separately?
Each of the separate future phases.
Okay, so, so that helps, and I guess it also helps us focus on the current app, or whatever would be the first-
Right.
The bulk of the first application, so, okay.
First application is the hotel and spa, five cottages, and the redevelopment of the Dr. Bennet's house.
Yeah, okay.
You know, the small white house right on 90.
Yeah, not only does it help us know what we should focus on, what we're looking at, but it has, obviously, an impact on our review, and especially as it relates to SECRE, UAF, and all that. So for now, it's good to know there's some future stuff happening, at least focuses us on what you're submitting to us at the moment.
And we identified the cottage parcel, the seven-acre parcel, as really to establish for financing needs, just establish a separate parcel just for that, you know, seven-acre triangle.
So you're saying that would be a part of, that subdivision would be a part of this current application?
Part of this, right.
Got it, for development some point, date unknown, okay.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, we did submit in the traffic impact study, potential left-hand turn northbound. That's in the study, that's being reviewed by Craig Manning. It's not clear that that's really needed, it's really more of a matter of convenience and some safety as you're driving north on 90, but the, the entrance into the resort alignment, you know, matches the left-hand turn northbound, so we've taken that into account. I think Craig Manning's, I spoke with Craig Manning, and we'll have comments from them next week.
I'm sorry, could you describe that left, I get it, left-hand turn northbound, why is that relevant?
Because we include it in the application. It's not, it's not on the site plan, it's off-site, but it's included in the traffic impact study. So as you're heading, as, they're, going southbound is okay, right-hand turn into the site, going northbound, left-hand turn.
Oh, I see, into the site.
Into the site.
Got it.
So eventually, all those off-site improvements will have to be shown on the plans or made part of the plan set.
Right. Yeah, we wanted to get Craig Manning's, you know, feedback on what they thought of it.
And, and the seven-acre parcel you're creating, you haven't submitted a subdivision plan yet, or I don't even believe you submitted a subdivision application, from what I saw.
Uh, we did not, no. And that's something that, you know, Dan Barry is, is working through.
Can I ask just a quick question of clarification on that topic? In your letter, I think it refers to an affiliated entity as the, I guess, the future developer of the cottage? Is that something you can just clarify with that?
Yeah, well, Mayor Bowe was a partnership, and then, you know, if there's 10 partners, it's going to be primarily owned by the managing partners, but it might be a few different partners, so it will get to him as separate legal entity.
Thank you.
The last thing was parking, you know, we have a great deal of parking, but our approach to parking was really more, we obviously, we- Yeah, we have a great deal of parking, but our approach to parking was really more, we obviously exceeded the minimum standard by the code. But it's more what the demand will be for our guests, for the uses, whether they're going to the spa entrance or they're going to the main entrance, whether it be their overnight guests or their dining guests. So we really placed the parking where it made sense for the guests, you know, to have convenient parking. And also for our employee demand. So we have three other resorts, you know, we have a lot of information on what the demand is. I think in our study, we included sixty parking spaces for employees. That's kind of the peak. It doesn't really reflect when you have, you know, one shift ending in three, another one starting at two. So there's a lot of overlap as well. So the sixty, really, the demand for parking is greater than the sixty that we showed.
Yep.
So that's, that was our approach to parking as opposed to, you know, how do we just put parking everywhere? Or, obviously, we met the code, but...
Yep.
So that's something that I know John commented on, so we'll work through that.
Yeah, that's something I, at least, stood out to me. At first, I was gonna say, appreciate your optimism, but obviously, it means you have, you know, experience knowing that there is a specific demand, so that's, that's what this is tied to, the over-parking. First time in Beacon we've ever had, you know, an application with more parking. But I will say, and this, I think, was also an observation by John, the abundance of parking right at the, you know, the Ninety entry there is a little worrisome. So we love to, you know, talk about taking a further look at that, and the abundance of parking relative to impermeable surfaces and whether there is thought to some other form of or combination of impermeable-permeable surface related to parking.
Right.
So, just an observation.
And, you know, Mike has addressed that in the stormwater management report.
Okay, great.
We have accounted for all of these two hundred and seventy-three spaces in terms of our stormwater.
That's good.
And luckily, we're right near the Fishkill Creek, so we're shedding water as quick as possible. But, you know, we'll go through, we'll go through that as well. Yeah, that was, I just wanted to, I'll turn it over to Henry, and he can kind of get into the site plan details a little bit more, and then David Boyce on the architecture.
Okay, great.
My name is Henry Thomas, I'm a landscape architect in principle with the LRC Group in Poughkeepsie. And I'd just like to give you a relatively brief overview of the existing condition, and then walk into the plan and some of the specifics. But, so the existing sixty-five acres is bounded by Route Ninety and Grandview Avenue on the east and south sides, and then by Fishkill Creek on the west. In general, it is sloping toward the creek, but also diagonally across the site from the northeast corner to the southwest corner. And it's roughly bisected about in the middle in a north-south way, topographically speaking. So the front half from Route Nine going west tends to be gently sloping toward that significant change in vegetation that you see there. And then below that is a slope that varies, but it's roughly eighty to ninety feet down to the floodplain adjacent to the Fishkill Creek. The front half is populated by a lot of what people would recognize as large legacy trees, clusters and groupings of trees. So there's, there's many generations of landscape in that zone. Some of it very old, some of it not so old, some of it volunteer and some of it intentional. So we're actively, you know, assessing and reviewing all of that. As Ed had mentioned, there are four buildings that remain in the southwest corner. You have the Tyroleana School. At the south center section on Grandview, you have the South Gate House, which remains. At the northeast corner, we have the Bennett Cottage, which has also been called the Farmhouse from time to time. And then, of course, we have the mansion and still existing, the hospital wing that's adjacent to it. The, you can go ahead. From a master plan standpoint, as Ed identified, there are, the focus of the improvements and the emphasis at this point in time is certainly in the zone at the northwest quadrant, or northeast quadrant, I'm sorry, around the mansion and the Bennett House. He identified those other components that also will come into play in terms of future ideas. But I think one of the points that is strong about all of those buildings to remain is that they are eager to stabilize each of those existing buildings that remain. The hotel area itself consists of a couple of substantial components. One is, first and foremost, is the mansion itself, and that is central to the whole arrival and impression of the place. And that mansion will be renovated and will contain a number of core hotel facilities, as well as a limited number of rooms in that building. Associated with that is going to be a new structure on the east side of the mansion, or roughly, and I don't want to say that it's duplicating the current hospital wing there, but it's in that same vicinity. And that would be a new construction of a hotel building, multi-story hotel, and a lower floor that is the spa facility. And then off of the southwest corner of the mansion, there's an additional addition, that makes sense, sort of, that has a limited number of special rooms and some additional core facilities that support the hotel and the whole operation. Those are the principal architectural components of that. The, we also have on this plan, you see the five orangish rectangles. Those are representative of the five cottage buildings. That would also be an additional lodging opportunity and a little different experience. And those are set out to be independent and standalone kinds of opportunities. Couple of specific things. When we were here previously, we had talked about the primary entrance being at the far northeast corner of the site. And that objective of that, that time, was to be able to get onto a historic loop drive around that northern meadow and arrive at the mansion in a way that had been done back in the late eighteen hundreds. There were a host of complications with that, some of them having to do with trees, others having to do with the logistics of constructing that entrance and what we anticipated might be a left-turn lane. And on that plan, we also were still going to utilize one of the existing curb cuts into the main part of the site. The plan before you shows one primary entrance, a boulevarded entrance, that is utilizing the northernmost of the existing curb cuts. And from there, developing a new, shorter and more direct arrival at the mansion itself, and that would be the loop feature that you see there. That would be the principal arrival point for anybody that's a hotel guest. The option that you have after entering is to bear left, and that would bring you to the spa area directly. So if you were a day spa user, you would be able to arrive at that facility. Adjacent to that whole zone of the buildings, both the existing and the new, there would be a series of connected, what we're describing as entry gardens. So that area between where you park and the building is intended to be rich and populated with a lot of interesting things. You're getting out of your cars and into the pedestrian zone. And then on the other side, on the south side of the buildings, is what we're describing as the pond gardens or the water gardens, and that's a signature feature of the Mirbo brand. And so, a lot of the rooms are oriented in that direction. A lot of core facilities are going to take advantage of it. And that would be the area with a lot of the blue water, water-ish looking graphics there in the center. One key thing, we have submitted a preliminary landscape plan. We intend to certainly develop that much, much farther. Part of that is geared toward working with the existing materials to remain. And as I mentioned, we've been reviewing a lot of the existing trees to assess their condition and quality and value. And then we're also supplementing that with new, future legacy trees. And then there's a third layer, which hasn't really been illustrated yet, but would be getting into managing views and screen. So that is something that we appreciate being the concern, and that we certainly intend to hit hard as we move forward. Moving on, I'd like to elaborate a little on what Ed was describing in terms of the distribution of parking or the emphasis of parking. There you go. So what we've, we like to identify is kind of how we picture the users using this site. So the two zones that were just highlighted were what we anticipate being hotel guest zones. And principally, most of the hotel parking would be there on the upper right. However, there's also a lot adjacent to the hotel and adjacent to Route Nine there that would be a smaller lot that would be for those kind of in-the-know or who, once they've arrived, they would be able to park at that lot that's got a little different proximity than the other larger lot over to the right. The second level, before I leave that slide, you can also see that there's a couple of little parks, parts of parking associated with the cottages, so they have dedicated parking spaces. And our expectation is that once you arrive at those cottages, you're pretty much leaving your car there, probably. And most of the rest will be on the floor door, golf cart, or some variation of that. But the parking would be proximate to those cottages. The next level would be responding to parking oriented to the spa guests. And our expectation is they're occupying that parking area that's on the front. And those would be more oriented toward day visitors that are not staying overnight. And I believe that also, yeah, that's, is that accounting for restaurants as well? I'm not sure if I can do this. Okay. The next slide, that would be spa and restaurant times, or the previous slide. These two parking areas are what we anticipate coming into play when we have venue events. One of the items that we've talked about on the master plan that I haven't mentioned yet, that green rectangle would represent the idea of a intermittent tent venue on the lawn or on the meadow. And so in those occasions, we would need or want some supporting parking, partly for visitors, partly also for those people who are supporting the event. So the Bennett House comes into play with the tent venue in terms of supporting it from restrooms and catering, kitchen, those kinds of things. Not a prep kitchen, per se, but just an organizing kitchen, if you will. And then lastly, we've got the farther outboard parts of the site parking that we would anticipate being more directed toward employees. So there is some specific intention in terms of how we saw that unfolding. Obviously, we're willing to certainly look at this and continue the discussions about how that actually ends up being implemented. That, with that, I would...
Can you just point out the first exit? Or the other curb cut?
Oh, yes, at the far left, you can see, we do have an exit-only curb cut, and that would be a regulated curb cut that would only be used in the event that you had a fire truck that had to get out of that end. So on a daily basis, nobody's using that curb cut. It's a two-way drive in that area.
Hi, I'm David Boyce with Eric's, The Architects for the Project. We wanted to give you, we knew that there was some concern about the parking in the front part of the site closest to Ninety, and we wanted to give a visual of what we believe that's going to feel like. Because of the grades, this is an existing photo that was taken about six months ago, and we've overlaid what the proposal is in the next slide. You can see the improvements to the entry drive and continuation of the landscape. Our goal really is to keep as much landscape as we can throughout the site. Obviously, the specimen trees, but especially the buffers along Ninety. So we have been looking at that quite closely. And we believe that, given the grades, there's quite a bit of elevation change from Ninety to the first floor of the building where the parking will be, which is about elevation one-seventy-eight. So we think that most of that parking will be very well shielded. And as Henry and Ed pointed out, it's really been located for access, accessibility, and specific user groups. But we have been working to develop the architecture, and we've been doing it in a couple of ways. We've been looking, obviously, at programming the planning, working with the civil engineers and landscape to understand the site, but also working with the history. There's a rich history, both on the site and in town, as, you know, as a reference point for the architecture moving forward. We just bring these up because you can see some of the things like the cottages. When we talk about the cottages, we haven't designed those yet, but we have plenty of reference points to bring back that feel to the site. The next slide is the aerial view of the existing condition, which you've seen. We've been working to locate the building, obviously, important part of getting the site planned done. The key is the northeast corner of the existing hospital wing is really our pinpoint for the new building. From that point, we actually moved further away from Ninety to about as much as a hundred and sixty feet away from Ninety. But that point is one that we feel is a good starting point for the new building. We've got to excavate out the existing building. Our new spa level will be a little bit below where the current basement is. But we know that that point is not so close to the existing Weeby Hemlock, that we feel confident that we can preserve that tree and still start the building there, close to the mansion, but respective to the mansion and the existing grounds. The next view is the back aerial view, and again, this is all in the development. We know it will be back at some time in the future for architectural review, but we wanted to show you a little bit of the development of that. When we were here previously, the building was quite a bit bigger. The idea of the grotto room is extending quite a bit further into the site. If we flip to the next slide, the current view actually has that pulled back quite a bit. We understood some of the concerns about the extension to that knoll that's there. And we've also just really wanted to tighten things up around the mansion. So one of our goals is to really enhance the view, the rear view of the mansion, restore it as much as possible while we're still creating the other program elements that we need to create. On the spa and guestroom wing, you can see how the building is starting to step down as we go south on Ninety. And that was an important piece for us as we were thinking about the views from Ninety. So we're going to continue to work on this. We have a lot of work to do in terms of our discussions with ownership. But this is the basic concept, using the history to create the feeling of smaller buildings on the surface. And again, this is a section that we included, and you can see a little bit of the grotto rooms and the mansion. So you can see how the mansion is being more restored than it is today. It's a lot more hidden by the modern, the more modern additions. And we're also trying to talk in this slide about the heights from Ninety. As you can see, Ninety is quite a bit higher. The building is, but along that side, it's about twenty-eight feet to the midpoint of the roof. The roof is lower than the mansion roof. It's an important part of our historic preservation to keep the roof of the new building below the historic Howland House. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we just wanted to be brief but thorough. That's really all we wanted to cover tonight. If you want to have any questions, when it was ready to come, and we really didn't digest all of that yet, but... Or welcome to do whatever you like. You know, the only, the only thing that we had on our agenda tonight was just the asset and the clarity data.
There's one piece. Just curious, we did receive some communications from our Greenway Trail Committee around their thinking relative to this property and its adjacency to the creek. Just wondering if you had had the chance to digest that letter? Are you in receipt of it?
We, you know, we're aware of it. We don't know a lot about the Greenway Trail, other than, all we know is the master plan had it on the west side of the creek.
Right.
We have some tremendous challenges on site. Next to the creek, I mean, there's the sewer line easement, which is basically a berm that is like park, swamp, and wetlands, and, you know, there's Beaver Dam, so it's just, in some spots, it's like two or three feet wide. So that's really challenging going on the east side of the creek, you know, on our side of the property. And then, there's a lot happening down at the Tyroleana School with grade changes and excess, so... And then again, it's all tied to whatever happened with the bridge.
Yep.
So we don't really, we haven't had a chance to really...
Totally. I was just curious if you had a receipt of it? I was just curious if you were in receipt of it, and will be interested to hear, you know, just those types of things relative to your assessment of what the Greenway Trail Committee observed and where it falls relative to just some of these challenges you're describing, so, for further discussion. So, just wanted to ask, understand if you were in receipt of it. And then, yeah, the other thing that we can address right now is to declare our intent to act as lead agency. So, why don't we do that before we, you know, go to our consultants for any highlights and then any questions from the board? So, I'll accept a motion to declare our intent as planning board, the city beginning to act as lead agency under SECREP.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
So, just wanted to take a minute, John, if you had any other highlights from your review that you wanted to bring to the fore?
My main concerns are around parking and placement of parking. And I just don't see how you can say that that parking is going to be invisible or screened. The whole point of maintaining the public view of the mansion from the street is to not have it screened and not put up a lot of landscaping barriers between that entrance and the mansion. So, you, we, I think it's unacceptable to screen off the view of the mansion from the public, because this isn't going to be a public site, so that's what you're going to get. And what I see here is that the spa parking is at elevation 182 and the entrance is at 178, or, so, I don't see it being screened at all. So, I think that's my major concern. I think over-parking is a problem. You have 75 rooms here, presumably over 100 people on peak days will be guests of the hotel, so why do they need separate spa parking spots and separate events parking spots? Presumably, some of those will be overlapping people, so you should actually be below the parking requirement using shared use analysis rather than being 60 spaces over the parking requirement. I think this is a very sensitive and historic site, and the parking in front near the entrance and the parking around that clump of trees, which were described when we did the site visit as being historic and legacy remnants of the original plantings, being surrounded by a parking lot just doesn't.
The crescent.
Yeah. It seems to me you can arrange that parking so that it's hidden behind the trees from the mansion view, so that that view out towards the north meadow is unobstructed by parking lots. The, I think we really sort of need a survey of the legacy trees, which ones need to be really preserved.
Yeah, Henry was actually on site all day today doing.
Okay, so it's in process.
We're going to have all of that located by Vady and Watson.
All right. So, that's an element I'd like we see, and if you're going to be removing any significant trees or certainly legacy trees, that should be indicated on the plan by species and size so that we know if we have to work around one, we can, we can make adjustments. There's some additional elements, you know, that building elevations, landscaping plan has to be finished. I think you should do an archaeological analysis for the new development areas, you know, where you're putting new buildings in.
Yeah, that's already been done, John.
Okay, we haven't seen it, have we?
I don't know if anybody, any of the previous owners that ever submitted that, but we have, Hartgen did a complete Phase 1A and 1B.
So, we should have a copy of that?
Yeah, so we have, we'll submit that.
And the other thing that I wanted to just mention.
Everything we've developed avoids any sensitive areas.
Yeah, I think you've been good about it. Most of the area to be developed has already been disturbed in the past, but for like the cottages and some of the newer elements, you know, I think maybe you should do some work there and look at that archaeological analysis to see if it provides justification that you don't have to do any follow-up work. And then, the last thing, I think we're going to have to have, for secret purposes, some more information about the phase, the later phase developments. If you're going to put a farm up, you know, a farm building, a barn, we should know where it's going to be generally and how big it's going to be so that it could be accounted for in seeker, so we don't get accused of segmentation down the line when you come in with a new site plan for a 30,000 square foot barn or whatever. And the same for the rental cottages, is how many, where they are generally going to be located, you know, so that we can say we've looked at the whole master plan concept and we can approve the seeker for it.
Okay.
And not be surprised by something that comes in the Phase 2 or Phase 3.
Right.
Those are my comments.
That's actually helpful. I went to my earlier question about how the phasing will be handled relative to the SECREP and whether they would be individual. It looks like it would be comprehensive as a part of a master plan. That makes a lot of sense. Thanks, John.
Yeah, I don't know that we have a lot of specifics on the site plan, because we just haven't, that hasn't been our focus.
Yeah.
But we can give you a conceptual site plan within the site plan.
Right, and put some numbers to it, and if, you know, overestimates for secret purposes, if you put in something smaller later, it doesn't, doesn't need to have a revised seeker element or anything.
Right.
Thanks, John. Mr. Russo.
So, we've had a chance to review the plans. They've initially started laying out some water and sewer. They will be required to seek Department of Health approval for the water system on site. They'll also need New York State DOT approval with regards to work along the main entrance and the road and utility connections. And then, we had some basic comments just to guide them along as they move forwards. Initial submission was very preliminary on information, so.
John, our understanding is that Craig Manning does the review for 90 in this section?
Traffic-wise, as far as utilities, that falls under us.
Yeah, just with traffic.
Yeah, and I understand you've submitted a traffic report, traffic analysis.
But ultimately, any work within that DOT right-of-way will require permitting from them.
Right.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions or observations around the board?
Yeah, in the December presentation, there, as I recall, there were 25 cottages originally spread out. Is that changed?
We had some cottages along the circular drive on the north side.
Uh-huh.
But that didn't, you know, the terrain just didn't allow for.
Okay.
Road or cottages, and it just, so we've really just identified these five.
Okay.
Sitting along.
And the.
Craig House Lane.
Okay. And the event space, that's in the later phase?
So, down by the school will be like a recreation. I mean, someone may rent out the school, you know, have a small event. But the event space on the lawn is right next to the Bennett Cottage.
The tent?
The tent, right.
Is that going to be a permanent tent or?
No, just it'll be seasonal, yeah. And, you know, and with that, you know, a lot of people that might attend that event are, you know, just going home at night or staying overnight at the hotel. So, that, you know, that is blended.
This is tent.
Which is why we didn't show a lot of parking specifically for the event space.
Sort of tent à la Basque Bell, that's kind of.
That's.
Or like Bard College, where they have that, is this like, I'm just curious, is this like a wedding event thing or is it like a?
Not like a, not like a 300 person tent, but, you know.
I got you.
It might be a small, you know, wedding tent.
So, you see the current Craig House School event space as for, specifically for smaller events?
Down at Tyranda, at the Tyranda School.
Yeah.
Down by the creek.
Right.
Yeah, and it might be all recreation. We just haven't, you know, we haven't developed that program yet. There's a pool inside it.
I know. Were you going to renovate that, the pool?
We're not sure.
That'd be cool.
We're moving up. You know, it's a short, it's a small pool. I mean, it's just like two strokes and you're.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Although, that sounds my kind of pool.
Yeah. It could be a spa pool. There are.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all.
You might already have in other places.
Right.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to turn then to the next item on the agenda. This is a review for an application for special use permit and site plan approval for an accessory apartment at 18 North Walnut Street.
Good evening. Thank you for your endurance.
And yours, you've had to sit through all of this.
I'm Scott Ramsey, and we're at 18 North Walnut Street, and our proposal is for, to build an accessory apartment onto our current lot, which would involve the demolition of our garage. Yes, for my mother.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I see. Actually, I didn't pick up on that when looking at this originally. So, your existing garage structure extends quite a bit more than what's shown on the, got it?
Yeah, so it's a.
So, you're taking down about a third of it. You're taking about one bay, one car bay, and then creating a separate, a separate structure. Is it a single-story structure?
That's correct.
Yep. Okay. So, we have a couple steps to go through. I think we want to make sure that we understand, you understand that just as far as the cumulative square footage, you're looking at a variance?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And that would be the only variance you're looking for?
I believe so.
Got it.
Yeah. There was a question around between Justin K. Kerr and Dave Buckley around the coverage requirement. So, in our note from Mr. Clark, it says there's not a building coverage requirement for our district, but we had heard from Dave, he believes there is a 30% coverage requirement.
Yeah, I talked to Dave about this. It was left blank in the previous zoning, and then it was, the previous zoning was revised in 2020.
Okay.
And it was always assumed that in the previous zoning, it was a mistake. And so, they used 30% because it makes sense.
Right.
And they always thought, well, it was a mistake in the table, that was left blank by a mistake. And so, everybody, he's, for years, he's used 30% for that zone. But when we redid the 2020 zone, we brought up the fact that this is blank and what do they want to do, the council, and they chose to leave it blank.
Okay.
Saying, we want to keep it flexible on these small lots.
Great.
So, when I told Dave that, he said, if that's the rationale, then that's what the code says, that's what they decided. It was a conscious decision rather than a mistake.
That's great. Yeah, Justin and K. Kerr, architect, we've been super sensitive to that percentage, so that's great to hear.
Yes. I have recommended that the board should put a percentage in there, but I said it would be 35% was my recommendation. They haven't acted on that yet.
Which board?
So, which in one way or the other.
City Council.
City Council.
City Council.
Okay. I was going to say, you're giving us more work to do?
No. I recommended that they fill in both that and the T District, which is still blank as well.
So, it saves just this type of confusion. And I see you've noted here, no building coverage requirements listed in R15 districts, so a variance is not needed. Okay. So, other, other observations, John?
Um, sorry.
You mentioned a fence.
Yes, which we do intend to put up.
Yeah, the fence is no longer there.
That's correct.
It was shown on the plan, so that, if you can put one in the backyard there on that side?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, no EAF is necessary for an accessory apartment.
Right.
On an existing lot.
Right.
So, that takes away some paperwork. There's needs to be some corrections in the table, which I pointed out.
Yes, which Justin has made those corrections.
And, and some notes put on it. So, I, other than the fact that it needs a variance, it's zoning compliant.
Yeah, great.
And then, once again, I've recommended to the council that they take away that cumulative accessory apartment thing. It should be just covered by building coverage, make it simple. These numbers that they came up with arbitrarily don't make any sense in many cases, and in this case, it causes a variance, where one shouldn't be necessary, because they meet the coverage.
Bureaucracy.
Yes. You shouldn't have to prove coverage three different ways.
Right, right.
Which is what they do.
One question that's also come up with Dave is the fact that the, and it honestly wouldn't change our plan dramatically, but it would make a difference in the zoning appeal, is that the garage may be grandfathered in, in some capacity. So, I don't know if that's something to be discussed here or.
We haven't looked at it that way in previous applications.
Yeah.
David mentioned he thought that that was a possibility.
I mean, I think it may be a factor, you could argue, in front of the ZBA.
Okay.
But in terms of needing a variance, it does not consider grandfathered, because you're adding a new element, it puts it over the limit.
Okay.
The garage itself is not over the limit.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Mr. Russo, thoughts?
The only other additional information I requested was to show the existing water and sewer services as, how do they feed the existing residents, and how you're going to provide water and sewer to the proposed accessory apartment.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Patrick Freeman is our contractor, and we've had conversations with him about channeling the sewage back through the main house. And then, Steve at SK Electric is going to be our electrician, and we've had conversations with him about also channeling electricity back to the main house. And we can absolutely.
And you're going to do the same thing with water? You're going to channel that through the?
Yeah. And we can absolutely provide, I mean, Justin said we can provide drawings.
Yeah, it'll have to be on your actual drawings here.
Okay.
Along with construction details for that work.
Yeah.
How in the heck did you get on Patrick's schedule?
Well, we're on his schedule.
Oh, there you go. So, this will be done in five years.
And there was also, I think, a question around potentially wanting to see elevations, which we brought.
Yes, that would be helpful.
To pronounce. There's a few copies.
Because I guarantee you, one of my fellow board members would say, where are the elevations?
Yeah, it was in my letter, I forgot to point it out.
So, there's a couple of other things we can, as you're looking at the elevations, we can talk about, one of them just procedurally is to, knowing that you will be at the ZBA, we can talk about potentially scheduling a public hearing, which is requires for when you are in receipt of your variance and the next appearance back here in front of us. And then, the other thing, and so we need to talk about that amongst us. And the other is to pre-authorize our attorney to draft a resolution so that she, we have it on hand for the next time you come before us. So, let's talk about your elevations first. Any thoughts, folks?
Looks fine.
Wow. That's the quickest "looks fine" I've ever heard of.
Well, it is getting late.
Yeah.
But I'm inclined to approve, because I, my first read through this, the agenda was like, 18 units on Walnut, no way. So, yeah, one, this, this looks fine. No comments.
My only comment on the elevations are that they're very simple and minimal.
That's our style.
Okay.
Yeah, well done. Thoughts? Any other thoughts or comments around the board? Do you want to talk about our recommendation to the ZBA for their consideration in review of this variance application? Thoughts?
Like what would we see then?
We could, we could lend our support to the variance, we could remain neutral, or we could otherwise say, heck no. So, how are you inclined, board?
I'm inclined to support it.
Okay.
I would also be inclined to support it.
I've generally said that accessory dwelling units contribute to affordability, so that's.
Sounds to me like it's in support.
Yeah.
You're not going to charge, is it for your mother, someone's mother? You're not going to charge a rent?
No, no.
That's, that's highly affordable.
That's not possible.
Randall, any thoughts?
Support.
So, we haven't done this in a while, so I think we need to just formalize through a motion to share our recommendation. And do we characterize it that way in support?
Well, you also want to make a motion to refer it to the.
Oh, we got to do that first.
Yeah. Actually, what is considered a positive recommendation.
Thank you. So, we'll do that in a oneer.
Yeah.
Works.
I'll accept a motion to share our recommendation, a positive recommendation, with the zoning board.
Motion.
Motion by Jill, second by Randall. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, we'll talk about pre-authorizing draft resolution. Uh, so it is, and again, that, um, sorry.
Set the public hearing first.
Oh, let's do that.
Motion.
Thanks, so, again, the public hearing will be, um, at the next meeting that you're here with us at, with variance in hand.
Okay.
So we're not gonna, we're gonna say it's May, we're not gonna say it's June, July, August. When you get your variance, the next time you're back in front of us. So I'll accept the motion to schedule a public hearing.
Second.
On that condition, motion by Randall, second by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, um, we can discuss pre-authorizing draft resolution, same, for it being prepared and ready for, and it doesn't mean we'll necessarily approve it at the next meeting that you're before us, but we just want to make sure it's ready, just to speed things along. Or I'd say, use our time efficiently. We don't want to rush anything. So I'll accept a motion to do just that.
Motion.
Motion by Jill?
Seconded.
Second by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Okay, so, next item on the agenda. This is a review for subdivision approval, two-lot residential, 146, 146 Furplank Avenue, submitted by Mr. James Petty. Evening. I'm not, it's not clicking. Oh, I did that today. Oh, thank you. I was gonna say, I had it open this afternoon. Hi.
Hi. I'm working on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm Dan Cole, Lieutenant of Land Management, engineer for the applicant, give this to my right, Mr. James Petty. Looking into a two-lot subdivision, parcel is about quarter acre, it's on the northeast side of Furplank Avenue, R-1-5, so it's pretty... So this, this, uh, exhibit here shows the existing house that is located there, 146 Furplank address. And the proposal calls for a new lot on the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, board, sorry. And in this district, they get the 50-foot, uh, lawn, so. Would be applied 50-foot lot, one of the benefits of the existing house is a porch, it's covered porch, so that has to meet setbacks, and that's 4.7 feet, so. In this particular application, we're also receiving an EPA area area of 4.3 feet. Existing water and sewer, which continue to serve the house. The driveway is located on the north side now, we're flipping that down to the south side. And then pushing the new driveway, generally in that same location, but just a little bit more north, where the existing driveway is, new water and sewer service connections.
That's it? Okay. So a couple things. Jess, she is our timekeeper. So just for clarity, your variance, you, you mentioned two, did you mention two? At least as far as I understand it, the variance comes on, through the subdivision, on the existing property relative to setback, right?
It's, we do the new line, but we, we...
Right.
Basically, we're just dating the old line, this is actually a file map 208, which was from, I think, 1863.
So it was there, but it went away.
Yeah.
So how is that relevant?
Well, just to be the same.
Nice try.
No, that lot line, that would be...
When it gets put back, it should be within new, new setbacks, but it, it can't be, okay. So that's, that's your one variance, I, did I, did I hear you mention another one relative to the...
No.
Okay, so it's just the one variance. Thanks.
All other setbacks.
Yeah, so, so again, board, we have, um, a few things to do, however, before we send our thoughts to the zoning board, one has to do with, um, completing SECR, right?
Yeah, my understanding, historically, the board's gone through the SECR process before this new referral.
Right. Right. So, just curious, where are, we, we need to obviously, um...
Declare your intent.
Declare intent to act as lead agency. And, um, so we could also, if we wanted to tonight, um, direct Jen's office to, um, prepare draft NAGDEC. So on those both, any thoughts around the board? So first, I'll accept the motion to declare intent to act as lead agency.
Motion.
Motion by Randall?
Second.
Second by Jill, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, just as a matter of procedure, um, thoughts on directing Jen's office to prefer draft NAGDEC? Accept the motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jill?
Seconded.
Second by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, um, from there, what else can we help you with this evening?
Do you have to have SECR public hearings?
Not necessarily, not, not for this one.
Second, there is a, actively, various...
Yeah, but not SECR.
Correct.
Right. Exactly, yep. So we'll, we'll do that when you get back from the zoning board, yeah. So just real quick, any, any observations from our planner and engineer, um, relative to the submission?
Yeah, they're taking down two pretty good-sized trees, and I'm asking for two trees to be replaced along the lot frontage somewhere.
Or can we just take that big pine, lift it up and put it in my yard?
We have had the pine, we needed the pine to put that in ours, uh, we were originally intending to build around it, if you wanted to keep it, uh, it was, it's about 60 years old, it should look to be about 80 years old, the only reason it looks so good is because of the touch it. Uh, so as soon as we start approaching a vine, it's going to start not looking as good as it is.
Yeah, the root system and everything, yeah.
We love it to, to pass.
You're sending it to a lumber, billiard? Some great boars there, oh well. Okay, the trees.
We have a six-inch pear, it's also the existing house. James thinks he's actually gonna be able to save that.
Yeah, I believe, well, I should have just been removed, but...
Okay.
Closest to the driveway, so...
All right.
So it...
If true, well, we should be able to maintain that tree in place, and we'll basically create a small clutter on the new lot, so they're, they're...
All right, I always like street trees, I always ask for them.
Pair the pair, so John, you're recommending two in place of a pine?
Well, I was, uh, they were taking down the pear.
Okay, so you're doing one for one.
At least one on each lot, and so...
You also, uh, have to do two, right?
Okay.
Okay, so you're, even though you're keeping the pear, you're going back with two? Okay.
Wait, is this a pear of trees or a pear tree?
Yeah, pear tree.
Ah.
There's a pear tree and a pine tree that are taken down.
Oh, so it is a pear, okay.
Or no, they're not taking the pear tree down. The only other thing I have is that it, the lot two layout as shown would make it pretty impossible to get out of one half of the garage. So you're gonna have to figure out...
One garage.
All right. All right, well, it's, it's big enough for a two-car garage.
Yeah, it's not representing that it's a single car.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, what's the other portion of the garage gonna be used for?
Workshop.
Is it gonna be closed off, is it gonna be partitioned off?
So one, one garage door?
There may be a wall inside garage, just to get that out of the workshop.
But it's one bay, one garage door. And then the other, you're required to have two parking spaces, so the other would be on the driveway.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, I'm not a big fan of having cars forced to drive, back out of driveways. But on this small lot, it's very hard, the only way you could possibly do it is to put the garage in the northwest corner and come in from the side.
Right, uh, we, we did look at that, uh, we, uh, that would increase drastically the, uh, driveway, we have a property already 90% driveway, the whole property. The only property on this entire block that has a turnaround is the one that's 90-foot wide.
I know.
Everybody else...
Backs out onto the street.
Could you, could you, if there's not a car parked there in the section that's half... Well, could you, could you back out, ham, what is it called, a hammerhead?
5.2 turn.
Yeah.
If you're already flagging out on the lot and use our car turnaround in a much smaller space than that, we have one possibility, we, my, my intent to improve existing homes to new home. Uh, and so the reason that space is also there, so we turn around and get out, we also heard of, uh, currently...
Okay.
Quick.
All right, I'm satisfied.
Anything else, John? Yeah, okay.
And I would recommend a positive recommendation to the ZBA on this.
Thank you. When we get there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I thought I'd throw my two cents in.
Appreciate it.
You might not ask later.
Mr. Russo?
So we're asking you to take a look at the drainage of the site, looking at the grading, you're actually creating some low areas in the backyards that are now gonna hold water that appear to drain forwards based upon topography, so that's gonna have to be looked at. Also, I had brought up the sufficient, or insufficient maneuvering. The other question I have is this future deck on Lot 1.
We'll remove that, that's gonna be there for that primary building.
Okay. I have a bunch of other minor comments and cleanups that they have to go through.
Okay, pay close attention. Um, board, anything? Thoughts? Questions?
No comment.
Other input? Awesome. Thank you.
You wanna refer them to the...
Not yet. To the ZBA?
ZBA.
I didn't give them.
I thought it was early.
Wait, we have to do, we have to do SECR yet.
Yeah. Don't we have to do SECR before going to the ZBA?
Yeah, so we gotta do that first. You're right.
Throw me off?
It's late.
Yes, yes, yes. What's that? Have you been retained by the city to consult? Well, Jen's, Jen's still sitting there on the phone, not saying, not able to say anything. I don't know, Jen, send me a text. Are we square?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so next item on the agenda is, we're probably gonna get a, a really long email from Jen after this meeting, saying, what did you do? This is the review of an application for special use permit and site plan approval, indoor/outdoor event space for Hannah Lane, submitted by Mr. Jason Hughes, represented by, hi. Hi, how are you? Mr. Segal. The floor is yours.
No. This is the yard, it's, uh, it's on Talix.
Yes, 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 yes.
What's his name? Uh, R.A. Segal, representing the owner of the different name. So the property is at 4 Hannah Lane, and that's part of what, um, was the former Talix Foundry property. Property is owned by industrial. The, the applicant owns the three, I think it was parcels, that you see the red outlines around on the site plan there. Um, the, the work of the proposal is mainly on this one parcel that has the existing one-story brick building on it, um, and the land around it. So the applicant is proposing to create an indoor event space in the existing building. Um, the, the other part of the building is, is chapped, that, those two spaces are not connected if there's an event going on. There would also be an exterior event, uh, venue in the yard. So, um, basically what he wants to do here is formalize what's being, um, has been approved on a case-by-case basis through the building department. Um, there's been events there, there's been concerts there, and, uh, each, each time it's been, you know, approved, it's a separate, sort of, either through a noise permit or a tent permit or something, but, um, basically, the idea is here to, is to formalize that, especially use permits, so you can do events there without going bothering people every time. So, you know, some of these are concerts, pop-up markets, rehearsal dinners and weddings. And then there'd be a, a food service area for the outdoor events, and that, that would be made with a shipping container modified, and, you know, set, set on, on a very tight foundation. So one question we have is, is that considered a building in, in the application?
You, you're, you're putting it on a slab and...
Yeah, so some kind of footing system.
Yeah.
So, so if, if it's a building, um, and it's accessory to the main existing building, it's, and I'll, I'll put the dimensions on the site plan, but it's 20 feet away from the side yard, and, and, you know, more than enough away from the front and rear yards, if, if we're saying the front and rear yards are what they are in the building. So, you know, but I just want to make sure, there is a kind of thing that, that, I just want to make sure that that's...
Yeah, anything with a roof on it is a building, you know, and it has to, there's no accessory, different accessory setbacks for the L.I. District. So it has to comply with the district.
Right, so, so from, from what I can see, it, it's more than 20 feet away on the side yard, which is the Blackburn Avenue side?
Yeah, it's a strange parcel, and how, what do you define as the front yard?
Yeah, and the, the main, the main entrance, I mean, the, you know, there's a couple entrances to the...
Right.
Existing building as well, so I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I can live with this being the front yard, because that's where the primary access is.
Yeah.
But then you have a non-conforming side and rear setbacks. But there's no way they would be non-conforming, which way you've set the yard up.
Right.
So it's really the side yard where the stage and the food service is that's sensitive to the setbacks.
Yeah, and, and the stage is not really a constructed, I mean, Jason, can you talk about that a little bit more, that it's an area that's set aside?
No roof?
No.
Okay, well, that, then it's considered not a structure and doesn't have to conform with the setbacks. Just anything with a roof on it.
So just, just so I'm clear, the, this drawing that I'm looking at, that looks like a stage, or at least, you know, the other seat.
Yeah, the stage and backstage area, it says.
No, that's interior of the building.
That's, that's the main brown building.
Yeah, so what are you talking about? And then also, to so I can get it in, where are these food containers?
You gotta look at the site plan.
That's, that's a stage, yeah, it's stage and backstage.
Oh, okay, forgive me, I was looking at a different drawing.
And then this, this gray, this gray rectangle over here, then I'll...
Got it.
That, that's the food service.
Okay, I got you, I got you, okay.
What is the other trailer?
Thank you.
Uh, that, that's like a storage, uh, for food shop, and then that's also something, um, Jason can tell you about, but it's been approved by Dave Buckley as long as it's screened out.
It's not on their property either. It's on the adjacent property.
Which he owns all three.
I know, but I mean...
But, yeah. And it just says trailer, it doesn't say storage, trailer, doesn't...
Uh, yeah, yeah, we can...
You know, is it like a Conex box, or is this a trailer on wheels, or...
It's a, it's a weight container.
Shipping container.
It's a shipping container placed out onto whether pad or appropriate places.
We'll, we'll also get, get you a narrative to address the, the items I asked about, and clarify, you know, we wanted to sort of introduce it tonight, and just clarify to the general items.
Okay. Uh, what about the, can I ask about the temporary portable toilets? Will they be coming and going, or are they a permanent feature on the site, or for the summer? What are they?
Well, la, uh, last year, they came and went several times. They came in July and stayed for August, and they went away, I think, back in October, when we had, you know, two or three more outdoor things. So, I mean, it's not our plan to have those all the time. When we have a more formal event, we would install something more like a restroom trailer or something else in it, um, but...
You have restrooms in the building, too.
There are, there are, including the ADA plan.
Right. You know, that's, that's not going to comply with the setbacks. And I assume that Dave would say they're temporary, and so therefore they don't have to worry about them, but they are a roof structure. You know, if they're going to sit there for a summer or some extended period, then they should be moved to a place that's not in the setbacks. And the stage itself is not going to have any roof, or the backstage area is just...
To be honest, our, and I missed out on REA's drawing, there was a concert there last summer, and she's daughter sang on stage in that location. We're an event staging company. We can put a stage anywhere. We had four different, we had three different stage locations for three different concerts last year. There is not a set stage location.
Yeah. I think it's probably good to have it here so it doesn't project noise towards the neighbors.
Right, absolutely. Yes, that location...
But that's why maybe you need a, some sort of back wall to it or something to contain noise.
Well, I think that our goal is not to be a stage venue most of the time. You know, last year, we didn't have that many events, but of the events that we did have, we had three with a stage and three or four without.
Isn't there a...
And it depends on the usage hour. All is remain flexible.
Isn't there an existing wall along Blackburn, or is that just an elevation change?
There is elevation change there.
Elevation.
For a template wall.
And there is fence or mannequin string.
Well, there is a combination of concrete that is an additional bearing between five and twenty fall on top of that four and a half foot wall.
But you can see, I think you can see from the aerials, it looked like you could see the, the top stories of the roof along Blackburn across the street. So, it's not entirely screened in terms of noise.
Right.
They probably can't see the site, but they could hear it perhaps. And so I think noise is going to be a factor that you're going to have to justify for seeker.
Sure.
And having the, the stage arranged such that it doesn't project noise to the nearest neighbors is going to be a factor.
Absolutely. What I can say is that we had a voice permit for each time we had a concert, if I do complain, if I do issues. And again, I mean, I'm a professional in the staging, technical backstage industry, and I'm also, you know, a property owner in that neighborhood. It's not my goal to upset my neighbors. We will be okay with it if we upset our neighbors. You know, so yes, of course.
So, provide in the narrative, noise evaluation of how you're going to make sure that your neighbors next year aren't complaining. Because now it's becoming a permanent thing rather than something that may, may see as just sort of a temporary one or two times to be worried about during the summer.
That's fair.
At the same time, I think that what we have, what we have come across in the area structure, that our goal is not to be an ever-to-be kind of place.
Yeah. No, I think that part of the narrative, that would be very helpful. Yeah.
Because once we approve it as an event venue, you might say, well, it's only going to happen four times a year, but you will be allowed to have it as many times as you want if, if that's what the site plan says. Or the next owner would be able to do it, even if you don't.
I'll be dead.
All right. Thanks, John. Mr. Russo, any thoughts?
What type of traffic volume is generated from these events? You know, concerns is how traffic is going to be handled in and out of the site.
Sure.
I know the gate down below is usually closed off.
Right. I do have an easement that gives me access to that gate. I do have the right to open it and keep it open. I tend not to because of the potential for it to be checked up on Main Street. There was one time when we had, I believe it was Firefly Festival, a benefit for coming down the farm in our firelot year back, in which there was also a volleyball tournament in Memorial Park, and we opened the lower gate because the police asked us to. There was just too much stuff coming out of that gate. But in general, we are centrally located. We improve in all of our social media and all of our promotional material. We encourage bike riding, walking, park bowling. We have, that's our events. The lot is not full.
How many... I'm sorry to interrupt, but how many people came to, say, the Halloween event last year, do you think?
A hundred and twenty with, with that head.
Thank you.
I would update your narrative to include discussion on how traffic is handled in and out of the site for events.
Absolutely. I, from past experience, one of the other buildings has been a Montessori school, which had, you know, a similar kind of traffic surge twice a day. You know, a first bunch of morning drop-off and an afternoon pickup surge. And the flow through there, it works. I mean, it had worked.
Your parking calculation table should take into account the other uses on the site. I don't know if things are occurring simultaneously or not.
Not.
Not? Okay, so maybe that needs to be discussed.
There's also a question. Apparently for outdoor events, the, it's in terms of discussion with the police inspector on how you come up with a public account or, that's special with the board. There's nothing specific about that part.
Well, you might be able to take a look at the types of events you've had in the past there, and if you're proposing those same things, and you have an idea of what you were getting volume-wise previously, you might be able to use some of that history to develop that forwards. But I would discuss it with Mr. Buckley further also. The only other thing, REA, in the rear of the building, where we have the stairs coming down, you have to provide a hard surface out to a public way and lighting in accordance with the state fire code if that's going to be an exit coming out of the building. So, right now, it doesn't show sidewalk extending. And the other thing we would recommend, on the right side of the main entrance of the building, we would recommend extending a sidewalk all the way out to the parking lot, so people from the parking lot could walk on a sidewalk surface.
On the, if you can say one that is the...
The main entrance, the main entrance of the building?
South side of the building.
Okay.
To the long parking lot. There's sort of a sidewalk stub that doesn't make the parking lot.
The long parking lot alongside?
Yes. It goes out to fifty-two.
Correct. That is...
Yeah, that's on another property. That's on another property, but you could extend the sidewalk over to what, you know, you're not really showing the edge of pavement. Extend this out to the parking lot.
Ah, okay.
Yes, this is on another property, but you're also talking about using this for parking. So...
Yes, and this is also, this part service extending here to there.
Which way, well, I couldn't tell which way the stairs were coming out.
Come down here.
Come down here and go around. Okay, so then you're fine with that with regards to the fire code. What is that? There's some cleanup you need to do, REA. There's certain notes and boxes.
Got everything but the kitchen sink on those drawings, REA.
Ah. That was the other comment I had.
Kitchen sink?
Is there going to be one in the food service, and how are you getting utilities there? In the trailer, you're going to have food concession. Are you running utilities? That needs to be shown on the plans.
Anything else, Mr. Russo?
No, there's some other cleanup things. And with regards to that trailer, no, storage trailer, just not. Trailer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything?
I asked that the, the long parking lot that goes out to fifty-two be narrowed on the plans. You have twenty-foot spaces and twenty-five-foot aisles, I think it was?
I think that's, that's existing.
Yeah, that's existing and that's on our property.
Yeah, but you're, you're showing it as you're, you're going to come up with an agreement with that property owner to use that parking. And presumably, are you striping it or not striping it?
It is, it is aged, striped.
I couldn't see any striping from where I looked at it, but, yeah.
And do you have a shared parking agreement to use that already?
We have a long standing handshake agreement that we would be going to formalize.
I think we're going to need to formalize it unless you can prove that this parking is enough.
Two of the three board members with Talix special classification just got back in contention. So, it works.
And I asked that the far end of it near fifty-two have some landscaping on it, since this is going to be essentially front yard parking for that parcel. So, if, in that agreement, you can say, can we put some parking, landscaping on the far end of that, so when you drive down fifty-two, you don't see a slew of parking?
I will certainly approach the data.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for taking that under consideration. Okay, anything else by the board?
There's one other comment. There's one other question that I would be able to address.
Please.
Which was, we're being too experienced at finding four sprinklers in the interior. And the answer to that is that my conversation with Dave about my understanding is that I can go up to an interior occupancy of one hundred without sprinklers. Now, in my estimation, my interior occupancy would be comfortable over one hundred and twenty. So, is that going to get out of planning on engineering and planning required to get extra twenty people inside is not worth it.
That, that's fine, as long as Dave, Dave will have a building poster or whatever else for occupancy limit. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. You're now creating an assembly space.
Yes.
And typically, it's required fire suppression.
So, you're saying Dave's going to require a stated occupancy signage?
More than likely inside the building to ensure that they're not, because if they go above a certain number, they would be required to have a fire suppression system.
Okay.
So, do you think this would be more for outdoor events, or?
It would be principally outdoors. I think, you know, our, our home room is proving as a good, we have hosted a number of outdoor fundraisers in the past. And then people wanted it to do things like the pop-ups at the Calico Center, people didn't feel safety with indoors. They wanted a market space for artisans, you know, so musicians. This was the help of, sort of all their families. And the interior space is a cool space, and it's a smaller room in each space. It has some value to it. We like it. But, no, I think this is principally an outdoor thing with education and awareness. I, yeah, and this is going to be a majority of our business. We are still primarily to defend technical support, including clarification, lighting, staging, audio, all of those things, all of those. And as an event, we are to keep the local events. We see ourselves complementing. If we do, we spread the lighting to the right. We don't want some more choices. We want to provide a outlet for reversal there for one of their venues at the end of the spot for attending seventy-five people or a rehearsal with them. Thanks for that.
Okay. Great. The only thing we can do tonight, just to advance this, is to authorize notice of intent to act as lead agency. So, I'll accept the motion. Oh, wait, do we need the EAF for that? Well, we need it as a part of the process, but we can, we can authorize notice to, notice of intent. So, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Sorry.
Second by Randall. All in favor? Aye.
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 And then with that, I think we're good.
Yeah, we'll respond to the comments and the narrative such that we can...
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, that completes our main agenda. We go now into miscellaneous business. What do we have on zoning board of appeals, April, besides anything we discussed here tonight?
One item is returning information to the Bureau of圓s. Any of you can go and discuss a little bit of people.
Okay. So, anything for us to... Okay, so this is informative. Thank you. Next item under miscellaneous business is for us to consider a request for a one ninety-day extension of a subdivision approval granted for fourteen Green Street. Hi. How are you? Good. So, we have your request here. Anything you want to say in your defense?
Uh, we did circulate the plans. We did a comments from John Russo's office today. They were extremely minor. We plan on circulating and everything probably in the next week or two for signatures. But with it expiring in May, we just want to make sure that if something knows what happened.
Just need a little more time.
A little bit of bump, bump.
Okay. Bless you, Atha. Uh, motion to grant this one, one ninety-day extension.
Second.
Uh, motion by Randall, second by Jill. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. So, then we go to the next item on the agenda. That being another request for one ninety-day extension. This is on an existing subdivision approval at fifty-two Denning's Avenue. Evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, Taylor Palmer, Kelly Fader, we're here for a ninety-day extension. We believe that the comments from the consultants have been satisfied. We're basically coordinating, and Mr. Upright from the county also confirmed that this thing is ready to be signed and sealed. It just needs to be, I guess, put forth for filing. So, the flat's basically ready to go. Just need a little bit more time.
Got it. I'll accept the motion to grant this one ninety-day extension.
Motion.
Motion by Jill.
Second.
Second by Randall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we go to... Wow, you didn't miss a second. Boom! Good evening. Good evening, gentlemen. Safe drive. Thank you very much for service and help. Safe home. So, under architectural review, we have a single-family house, the Shea Home, and a gentleman approaching us with large samples. How you doing, Gary?
Gary Joseph.
Never heard of you. What do you got? Do you have drawings?
I have another drawing just showing us a quarter mile from the deliberate road.
Uh, if you think it would help, and if you can get that thingy to work, sure. Forgive me. Excuse me. So, we've got... Walk us through. What we got?
It's about thirteen hundred foot off Mix Main Street down Shea Lane.
Jill, you know the area.
I haven't been to that lot, but...
I'm sorry?
I haven't been to that lot.
Yeah.
Help us associate what you've brought here to what you're showing other individuals.
So, what I have here is hardy board siding. It will be board and batten. There's going to be a stone. Sorry, let me start at the basement. There'll be a stone on the foundation level, which will be a mosaic stone in style. The first floor will be...
Are those, sorry, are those like just facade stones?
No, these are real stones. It's not culture.
Dimensional?
Yes. We're going to do hardy board and batten on the first floor.
Vertical?
Vertical. And then on the inset is going to be this color, same, on the hardy. And then up in the eaves, we're going to be doing some shake, hardy. And the gables, yeah.
Oh, I see that. You're starting to indicate that here.
Right. This is the roof.
It'll be more sanitary.
Okay. And then it sounds like, or it looks like your window frames are black?
They're black, correct. Garage doors are black.
Luminous or wood? Are they luminous windows?
Uh, wood windows. They're going to be possibly, if they're Marvin, I'm looking at Marvin right now because Marvin can do this. What I'm looking at, I'm doing is this corner glass piece here on the staircase, and Marvin makes this window where Anderson doesn't. So, there'll be fiberglass outside, wood inside.
Okay, so it's clad, fiberglass clad.
That's great.
Any thoughts?
I like it.
Any other questions?
This is my personal home that I'm going to be building, by the way.
Oh, I was going to ask. Okay.
And a good choice of designers.
I was going to say, who's this guy? Okay, motion.
Any changes on this?
Single sided, no. Now, red coat and color gray.
You know, I noticed that.
This is, this is not an atypical condition.
I've seen many, you know, shaker barns that do something like this. It's not, I've noticed this, and it stood out, but it's not, in my view.
No, but it always draws attention to that corner transition. And. We're showing you the problem spots. This is, this is. It's fun. You have a grade issue, right? You have to connect to a grade on one side.
I have a grade issue, and I don't like this either. I don't know what I want to do here. If I can actually go through it, we'll transition this a little bit better, but that's.
Honestly, again, this reminds me of a condition you'd see like a, you know, like a shaker.
We're trying to articulate the kind of water table here with the windowsill, which is the entry side. And we don't want to carry up the base because it's just too.
Absolutely. Just changing the, yeah.
We're not designing it for them. Let's just point it out.
I didn't mean to nitpick it. And you're, I'm sure, going to have time to deal with it, and to the designer as well.
Uh, yeah, okay. So Randall said motion, but motion for, motion for what?
Second.
Motion for what?
Okay.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve by Randall, second by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's always nice. Good to see you. Thank you.
And make a reveal or a patent or a patric.
Which sign?
Then you're designing, then something is like unique.
Two signs.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Have a good night.
It's a tough one.
So this is certificate of appropriateness 473 Main Street signage?
Oh, geez, oh, God. Did you?
No, I haven't yet. Hang on, hang on.
This came before us last month. However, someone wasn't here, so welcome.
My daughter was not aware of that, but it's supposed to happen.
It's raised, we were not here.
I'm sorry, I was thinking about the others.
We didn't have anybody at all here to speak to this.
Because I was doing the homework for her, and I was unaware of the requirement, because I asked, I gave my application and my check to Jamie Madison.
Ah, okay.
So she didn't have the rules or anything that I'm sure I know about.
I understand, no problem.
You're here now.
Yeah, no, I was just, I was pointing out to these guys that we did look at this while we were, so, without, without anyone else to ask questions and otherwise prod for information. We held it over to this month. So, thoughts, folks?
It's a little busy. Does everybody need to have the sign? Does that, do you all need to have, be on the sign?
Well, when I talked to Dave Buckley, we were, we were looking for signs with the Dan Studio, my daughter's Callie wants to go to Dan's Studio. But Dave said that we can only have one sign on the building, so that felt wrong, since there's three businesses there. So that's when we asked John and Chris and the other owner, Wanderlucks, if they were interested in being on the sign as well. And everyone was interested. So that's why it's busy, because Dave said we can only have one sign. So the sign maker tried to make the sign work so that all three businesses could be represented.
And are they easily switched out in case things change?
Yeah, yes.
Personally, I'm not crazy about the purple, but other than that, to me, it just looks a little.
So my daughter, they need to change mine to Dan's class. Where's the colors?
Yeah, I will say, I know it's a, it's a sort of an interesting, you have three, three different businesses within one building, and you can only have one sign to represent three of those. And so it means that no matter what the combination of businesses, their logos, colors, it's going to be a mishmash.
But everybody's going to be noticed.
Yeah, no, I under, well.
How would you get a customer in?
Yeah, no, no, I get it.
It's like hidden in the back, she's already suffering because it's.
Yeah, this is a rather big sign.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
Thirty-six by 24.
Bigger than most signs.
I'm sure it meets the sign size requirements.
It meets the size requirements.
All right.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's, it's hard for us to say, you know, one day this, I mean, I hope, I hope Passion Studios and Business for a very long time, and everybody else here. But this is a moment in time.
Does Wanderlucks still pretty much kind of get the display window?
Um, that is not at all official. It's supposed to be switched out, whether you just give it any rose you want it, but we actually come through, use the proper or whatever reason, so it depends. It doesn't have any.
Okay, I was, I was just wondering how, because I've noticed, you know, walking, walking passes frequently, frequently, you know, I've noticed the clothing in, you know, in the window. And then, there's some kind of temporary sign up for Passion right now, right?
Yeah. The Wanderlucks.
Other, other questions I have, is this double-sided, meaning you're going to see the same thing from both sides?
Yeah, well, writing the letters.
Yeah, no, it's not going to be in reverse.
I mean, yes.
Same thing.
Mirror image on the other side.
Yep, and it's not intended to be.
It's the same as, as.
Okay, it's not intended to be lit?
It is intended to be lit.
It is intended to be lit, so there's.
It just like.
So it's backlit?
Hakan or whatever.
Hawken?
Hawken.
Hawken.
Hawken, we've, Hawken.
Really delicious chocolate.
Yeah.
I'm being even has that, so that's good.
So it is going to be lit. So you're pulling, you're pulling your power in through one of these posts?
There is a pipe that goes into the basement already from some design, so we talked to the technician, to him, because the wire could be run up right where the signs go being used.
How, so the sign, so you've given us an elevation, you've given us the sizes. When you look at it straight on, what is this depth? The thickness of it?
Is it not a sign?
No. Just curious.
It's similar to Hawken's, but it's not on there. I don't know.
This isn't lit, I don't think, is it?
It is.
This is lit.
It is, entirely?
Mm-hmm.
Guess I'll get there tonight.
It's a pretty hot piece of tile.
It is.
The business tends to be a nighttime business, the passion for this, so.
Anything else, guys? Motion to what?
Approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve on the table by Jill. Don't all jump at once.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you.
Awesome.
And in the case of other potentially visually disturbing signs.
Dad, I'm seeing a.
I know, I'm, we get punchy at the end of the night, forgive us.
Change it to neon, it's.
I got to say the one thing about, Hawken's great, but he does have that neon sign inside. And when I look at neon, something, you're not supposed to look at it straight on. Burns me in the eyeballs.
Little red especially.
Well, we've saved the best for last.
Okay, so we've got a ping pong paddle on a truncated stop sign post.
I thought it was a potato on a stick. I think it was more of a.
We have a larger ping pong paddle on a longer.
So, okay, so you've responded to, this is still Corten steel, it's got an industrial feel to it. You've responded somewhat to the size and readability aspect of our comments last time.
Yep.
So these are now.
With 11 by 17 to 18 by 30.
Do we still have the context of where this is located? Because I feel like the last time we saw a drawing for this, it was coming up out of a planter. Do we still, is that the same location?
It's the closest entrance to Main Street, and it's now enlarged, and the issue the board had, if I may, Taylor Palmer with cutting favor, I have the applicant for the record. We also adjusted it so it's taller now. We had, it was, it was die-cut letters, so there was concern about it being readable. All of it has been, everything about the sign has been enlarged and increased. Of course, there will be a sign permit process, sign permit review process, and that's where formal, I guess, sign details are incorporated.
Right, so its location has been memorialized on the site plan approval, so it's there.
Remind me, please, how much that elevation was? Because I guess I'm just trying.
It was 20, yeah, it was 24 inches, now it's 36.
But I mean that, was it, was the planter already off, above the sidewalk?
The planter?
I thought it was, I see, this is the thing, it was, I thought it was, okay, so, because it's shown in this venue, it's shown with somebody standing next to it, it's coming up out of foot level, is that where it is?
It was just being shown in.
Yeah, I think we're just giving context the height of the sign, and, I mean, our, if you want to speak to it, we just raise the overall height of the sign.
Right. And made it, and made the surface larger.
The light sign now is raised up because that was a concern, that it was too low.
This is horrible. It's a horrible sign. I'm just going to say it right now. It's also a little bit against the spirit in which you were given a fourth floor, and the space being.
Not to interrupt, but the sign has nothing to do with the fourth story.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does, absolutely.
You need to use a microphone.
I, actually, do you think, John, that we should refer this to city council? Because there was a long, long discussion about, at city council, it wasn't with.
We've, we've more than doubled the size of the sign. We've increased the lettering, we've added every word that was requested in the site plan approval. It's in your, it's in your resolution.
I'm, that isn't what I was saying. I'm asking the board whether or not it's appropriate.
No.
Since this is undercutting.
I don't.
This is, this is a taking away, an agreement that was done with the city council.
No, it doesn't, doesn't, Kevin.
It does.
It represents, it represents a readable sign with the information that we had asked be represented on that sign. It may not aesthetically meet your, or anyone else's approval, but it serves the purpose of messaging as we'd requested.
It actually.
And I do not, I do not think that, yes, it does. It says, open to the public.
It doesn't comply with the requirements and the requests of city council.
I don't agree, I don't agree with you, because, yes, if you could be more specific, Kevin, about this, because I really don't want this to drag on. If you could be more specific and clear in why you think this rises to the level of an egregious, well.
I think it definitely undercuts the intent of city council when they voted on giving this benefit to the building and as.
City council approval had no representation about signage. It was about size of the park, and the park was kept within, the opens, the green space was kept and enlarged based on the comments and the comments of this board significantly over what was originally proposed.
I was, I listened to those.
If you recall, the applicant specifically requested that no signage should be utilized here, because it doesn't fit with the character of the building that's being built. The board disagreed with that, and as a result, the applicant proceeded with a, to develop a sign. The approval from your board specifically said that the sign needed to say, welcome, open dawn to dusk, and welcome, open to the public. It's all incorporated on the sign. The sign has been enlarged significantly. We don't believe that it is consistent with the building or, or otherwise. We wouldn't propose a sign at all, but we've added the sign and enlarged it, increased it to give it visibility and to represent the comments of this board and the spirit of that green space.
Len, do you have any thoughts on the subject?
Yeah, I'm just going to ask one more time, just because it's, I'm sorry to belabor this, but it's just not clear to me. So the previous meeting, we had the landscape, the lighting and landscaping plan, and so the sign was shown, it looked to me like it was inserted within a planter or that berm that the sculptural seating is behind. And so I'm just trying to figure out, I see that you've raised the height to 36 inches, and you've increased the size of the sign. I'm trying to figure out where that sign is going to be relative to someone's eye level. You know, like, is it, if it's, so, that's all I'm saying, because I, because it's.
Yeah, there were requests of where, I mean, I don't think there was any, that wasn't, I think that was just to show, I think that was just a representation of height versus human, I don't know that.
Yeah, so is it.
There's no.
So there's no requirement that it be at eye level, so if.
Well, I think the only reason I bring, I'm just trying to get in my mind around how visible it's going to be, and I think we had that specific discussion at the last meeting, where we talked about.
To clarify, we talked about the Greenway Trail, which was, which is different. When you're on a trail, on a tree, there's a, you know, a lot of kinds of places to put those signs.
If you look north to the Greenway Trail, you have a sign that is relatively at eye level, so it is quite visible in terms of communicating the intent of that space to a person. And I'm just, I'm not trying to belabor, I'm just trying to say, is this thing going to be exactly 36 inches off the sidewalk, or is it going to be in a planter where it's 36 inches above? That's all I'm trying to figure out.
I see.
There's a location on the plan that the board desires of having this. We're not, we're not objecting to that. If it's 36 versus 48 feet, I think the intent here is to show that we had a sign that evidence that it's open to the public.
Look, show me where it is on the landscaping plan. I would submit, I personally would submit that even if this was placed at sidewalk level, at 36 inches, it's readable and visible. And it's clearly marked what it says, and it's readable, so.
And then again, we're, our goal here is that.
It's not beautiful, but.
We want this to be, you know, as far as, you know, we're trying to make the space known, you know.
No, you're not.
We want it.
You're absolutely not.
Stop, Kevin, this is not for argument. The sign is readable. It serves the purpose of communicating the information that we've asked the applicant to communicate. It's not as aesthetic as.
A lawyer can determine minimum requirements. The judgment of a board.
So, look, we either.
Should be used in order to determine whether or not the intent is being fulfilled or being, is being attempted to.
The sign has been enlarged significantly. It incorporates the specific request of language from your approval.
And it will be in the same location as shown on the previous landscaping plan, which is sort of on the, on the entrance and the side of the entrance closest to Main Street.
It requires a sign permit from the building department, so I, if that has any impact on it, that will be a building department confirmation, but that is where we're proposing to locate it based on what's on the site plan. So assuming there's no issue with that from the building department, that's where it's going to be located.
Is there any reason why it couldn't be higher, put it at 48 instead of 36 inches?
Yeah, again, it's all consistent with the aesthetics. I mean, the RA, if you want to try and see to that more specifically, that's the goal, is to not, you know, I think there.
I don't think it needs to be any higher, quite honestly, because it becomes a visual obstruction to anything else. It's higher than that rail right there.
I'm okay with 36.
It's readable, and that's my point. It, it, it has the messaging that we had asked the applicant to apply to a sign that's visible and in a location that is visible to people approaching the park. It doesn't need to be visible all the way across town from, you know, here to Timbuktu. It meets the requirements that we've asked the applicant, even if it doesn't personally appeal to my aesthetics or anybody else that's here on the board. It's Corten steel, it appeals to some people's aesthetics.
But, John, that's the very, that's what we're doing.
So, Kevin, if you're going to, if you're going to vote no on this, please just do, because I need to get home. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve. Motion?
Okay.
Second.
I'll make the motion. Motion by me, second by Randall. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for talking.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I think that there's.